As persons are coming in, I do want to acknowledge that we are calling our February the 7th, 2023 School Board meeting to order. And as we call our meeting to order, we want to thank everyone for being here on this evening. And each of our board members have had the opportunity, accessible to the public as well, to view our proposed agenda for tonight's school board meeting. And so, under Section B1, I would now be willing to entertain a motion to approve the agenda at this time if we are in that place.
So moved.
The move by School Board Member Preston is their secondary motion. Andrews, a second motion that we will approve tonight's agenda. Any further questions or discussions from any member of the board? Then, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Charles?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And again, this is a wonderful opportunity to come and talk about matters that are of extreme importance. And on this day, we know later on, our President will be giving the State of the Union address. And so, it's appropriate of us to stand now and share in our pledge to allegiance. A pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That is mighty special to be able to share that together. Before we move into Section C, I do want to acknowledge that this month is Virginia School Boards Association School Board Appreciation Month. And we do have a certificate to our board members acknowledging this, Rising to the Challenge 2023. And we have a certificate signed by David Woodard, the President, and Gina Patterson, the Executive Director. We have one for Mrs. Gloria Preston. If you could pass that along in that way. Thank you for your great work. Mr. Randy T. Trose?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Kimberly A. Sinha. Dr. Robert O. Brennan, Vice Chair. Dr. Sharon Y. Carter. Dr. Atul Gupta. Dr. Martin Day. And Mr. Anthony Andrews. Thank you so much.
We've got one more. Hold up. Dr. James E. Coleman.
Yeah.
All right, Governors team, thank you so much for your hard work on a daily basis and for all who've come to hear our deliberations tonight. Section C is a special presentation where we're going to have a draft of the 2023-2024 LCS calendar discussion. And Dr. Edwards, if you would, please.
Absolutely. So just before I bring up part of our calendar committee, also want to note on the table and say thank you to all of the students and staff who have prepared little nice gifts for the school board, showing a little bit of appreciation and some snacks inside of things. So if you're out there, thank you so much for the board appreciation from our students and staff.
Let's thank them.
Okay. And we happen to have the pleasure of having members of our calendar committee here with us. And that's a job to do the calendar, propose a calendar for next school year, where you're trying to meet the needs of everyone. And they do a great job of balance. So I am going to invite, is it Cat Phillips, to come up to be the rep and any other members, if you want to introduce who is here. Love to have that too.
I know Carl is here too. Carl Luce?
Yes.
Anybody else I didn't see?
We had a giant team.
Yes.
Okay. So you guys have the proposed calendar. It's very similar to last year's. One of the things with this committee that we put together, their parents, there were teachers, we had people in from admin, HR, CNI, student services, and the equity team. And one that was left off that list was we did invite Hope Custer from Transportation, and she was really helpful in making us understand all the different stakeholders. So with this calendar, this is the result of us surveying all our stakeholders. We asked parents, we sent out a survey, we asked all the users, all staff members, and we also asked all of our secondary students because we just wanted them to have a voice too. It's interesting, staff, parents, and students had similar requests. They wanted to have a full two-week winter break. So we definitely, everybody agreed that was really important. And they wanted to end school late May and early June. Those were, that was agreed on all of our stakeholder as far as those, the survey. And so, the big changes from this year's calendar as a result of those requests, again, that winter break was important, that early June or late May finish. People wanted a fall break or to start school later in August. But if you put that math together, if you finish late May or early June, you can't start but so late and still get the 180 days for students and then the 12 PD days or workdays for our staff. So we did remove all half-days, and that was due to a Transportation's request because half-days are really hard on transportation. It's hard for the bus drivers, it's hard for the staff at the schools, it's hard for parents. And so, even though we really loved those as teachers, it was something that we just took off, except for Exam Week and then the last day before winter break and the last day of school. We also moved orientation, kindergarten, 6th and 9th grade orientation, instead of to the day before school. We put it to the Friday before school so then Transportation and folks can work out some kinks if they need to on that Monday before school starts. And we did push a conference day earlier to September because we wanted to get the parents in and involved earlier. And so, that one's later in the day, and our second conference day in the second semester is a regular school time because we thought maybe if we get the later parents who can come the first day, the second conference day, we maybe can get some of those folks who are available earlier in the morning. So we, that's why we made that change. The other things are constraints, 180 days with AB block. We want to make sure we have even quarters so that we don't end on an A-day because then you would only have 1st through 4th period. So we tried to make sure our quarters were even and our semesters were balanced at 90 days. So that strange kind of end of semester in mid-January is so that we have 90 and 90 so those driver's ed folks in the first semester get as much driver's ed as those in the second semester and it's not imbalanced. So I'd love to have questions because there's a lot that goes into it. But this was after getting all that survey data, what we came up with as would be best for the division.
So Madam, since we're in this discussion tonight, correct?
Yes, yes.
Members of the board, any questions that you have concerning the calendar and its draft form presented to us tonight? How Dr. Gupta?
Has it been shared with like Governor's School and other units which work in sync with LCS?
That's a great question. I don't know that specifically Governor's School has been, they typically do a different calendar than ours. They start earlier.
But I know they want to see this.
Yeah. Yeah, so they definitely would have access to it. We can, it's on the board docs, but we'll share it with them for sure to make sure that there's no days that are flagged for sure.
All right. Dr. Sinha, then Dr. Brennan.
I know our calendar is padded to accommodate snow days. Where would we see those? Are those the professional development days or?
So the state requires, it's 990 hours or 180 days. This is like 1,080 hours. So there's more than enough. This is similar to what is this year too. So if we don't see any snow days, that's when we start saying, well, should we? I think it was 2017 where we actually got a day back right before Memorial Day because we had so many extra hours. We felt remiss in saying, oh, we want fewer days or fewer hours right now because we really still are working with that learning loss and trying to make sure everybody's where they need to be. So to be like, wait, we'd actually like to have, you know, we don't know if it's going to snow next, next year or not, but we are, we have at least 10 days in there if not, you know, flooding and buildings needing to be shut down for a little bit. So that's definitely in there.
All right. Thank you for clarifying.
Dr. Brennan?
Philip, thank you and your committee for doing all this work and balancing all those different numbers. So this is being presented to us tonight, and then it goes out to the public for their review and comments. Is there sort of a time for the public to do that and comes back to us for approval? Or maybe I should look to Dr. Edwards to see if she can help us with that.
Yeah, so we bring it, we, we, one of the reasons why we have a committee that consists of the various constituents is sometimes it's very difficult when you have 60 to 80 people trying to get a school calendar together. I'm sure it was even challenging with 20 doing it. So it is public now, so if there's anything, and it's available on board docs, if there's anything that the community would like to weigh in on, they can certainly email us, email me, or email Mrs. Stevens to do that. It's going to come back to the board for, again, you guys are going to take a deeper look at it and just kind of take a peek before we vote on it. And then it usually goes for two readings after that. So yes, anybody in the public who's seeing this for the first time, especially if there's, and they've done a great job of, you know, counting days, as you said, balancing semesters. One of the reasons why we have secondary teachers, elementary teachers, and just trying to have parents so that we cover, is the parent-teacher conference day in there and all of that as well.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Trose, and then Dr. Day.
I see the January 2nd identified as High School Graduation Day. And you see, I see the, I'm sorry, June 2nd. And, thank you. You'll be nice, Jean. And then May 31st is being the last day of exams. It seems to me I've heard some concerns over some of the teachers in terms of exams being pushed right up, right against the graduation day and there being concern of some students not, we're not knowing if they're going to make the qualifications to graduate or not.
Sure. This semester, this, this, for this year, they're even proposing that seniors take their exams a week early. And it's pretty easy with a blocked schedule. You have the 90-minute period. They could do that within the school day. And then that way, the seniors that may need a little bit of help getting over the hump or giving counselors the time to make sure they get the SEALS and the diplomas and the GPAs calculated. I know that our high schools would love to have that extra time. So yes, it's tight here and this is kind of typically what it is. But if it works well this year, if that's approved, then, then next year, then that could be something that we do with our seniors. Some seniors in some schools graduate a full week early, have graduation, and they're gone, thankfully. So then the other folks can focus on their exams and that sort of thing.
Thank you for addressing that concern because I know there's a lot of pressure on some of these instructors.
It is. And working with the staff and stamping.
Thank you.
Dr. Day, thank you, Mr. Trose.
So is this our first reading or is that, is one of the future meetings, our first reading on this?
This is because you all have not been involved in it. We're just presenting it tonight and then it'll be up for two different readings.
Okay, thank you.
So you'll have some more time with it.
Okay.
All right, board, are we all clear on this? This calendar is so critically important. Across the years, we've had some deep conversations about, about what should be on the calendar, what should not be on the calendar, how it should work. We certainly thank the community for your full engagement in this process as well. And so, we are, we're thankful for that. If there are no other questions, then we want to thank you for bringing this to us tonight, and we'll look forward to having our thoughts entered in the first reading, second reading, and ultimate approval of the budget, of the calendar, calendar, calendar. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, that now moves us to the next section of our agenda for tonight, which is Section D, Public Comments. And I would like for our clerk to be ready after I read the statement to share the order of the presentation by category. Of course, we've discussed this, and whenever we have a public comment opportunity where there's robust engagement, we just want to make sure everybody knows that we're consistent in how that goes about. But to those who will appear tonight before the school board, you will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures. Make comments about public official or an employee that are not related to their official duties. Engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at a school board meeting is 30 minutes typically. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input, and the board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time typically. Madam Clerk, could you just help us to appreciate the order of how I'm going to call out persons tonight, as a categories?
If there are any students?
Okay.
Then parents, staff, and community members.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Can I ask how many people we have signed up to make comments?
Right now, it appears to me that I see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 persons who want to share in person and one voice, one phone message, voicemail message.
So we can probably not quite get all 10 in in 30 minutes?
If it is the pleasure of the board, according to our rules, there could possibly be a motion made to suspend the rules for tonight.
I so moved that we suspend the rules, the 30-minute limit for this evening's public comment session to enable everyone who wants to speak to.
It's been moved by Dr. Day, seconded by Mr. Trose, that we would suspend the rules typically that govern our public comment section. There is no debate on the motion, and it does require two-thirds approval of the board. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Charles?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter?
No.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one.
All right. Then based upon the categories, we will suspend the rules if necessary after the 30th minute. Looking at this the best way I can, I don't think I see a name of a student, but I do see names of parents. So we'll get started with Mr. Andrew Glover, who is going to speak to us for five minutes. Well, actually, yeah, five minutes, Conservative Parents of Lynchburg. Mr. Glover.
Thank you. Good evening, Lynchburg City School Board. My name is Andrew Glover, and I am the founder of the Conservative Parents of Lynchburg, a group of nearly 400 Lynchburg City parents and caregivers and teachers who I represent tonight. First off, I want to make you aware of a school-wide field trip this Thursday at Dunbar Middle School. Dunbar is sending our students to a play that has been described by a college professor as, quote, "a one-sided, anti-Constitution and anti-national anthem diatribe that teaches disrespect to the Constitution," end quote. Quite simply, this play is the very definition of critical race theory. It is divisive, attempts to paint America as being fundamentally racist, leverages collective guilt, and portrays white actors as racist simply because of their skin color. Now, tonight, I don't have enough time to go in and articulate everything that is wrong with this play, but earlier this afternoon, I emailed each and every one of you a more detailed information on this matter. I call on the school board to immediately terminate this field trip. If you want to send Dunbar on a field trip that celebrates Black history, I would encourage you to instead send him to the Booker T. Washington Monument, which promotes strong American values. Now, interestingly, the play script was made available to parents as a part of a school-mandated opt-in process for field trips. This opt-in process not only brought transparency to this issue, but also it affirms that parents do have a fundamental right to make explicit decisions for their students, which leads me to the second topic tonight. As you're all likely aware, two weeks ago, Lynchburg City Council passed a directive requesting Lynchburg City School Board revise school board policy IIA-RZ as it relates to sexually explicit material in Lynchburg City schools, with the specific revision being that the policy be adjusted from an implicit permission known as opt-out to requiring explicit permission known as opt-in. Now, consider for a moment, would it be okay for the school to take children on a field trip without parents' explicit opt-in permission? What about giving medication to students? Should the school be allowed to medicate a child without the explicit opt-in permission from parents? Or take pictures of them and publish them all over the internet without permission? Now, we don't actually have to consider this because the school has policies in place that require opt-in for all of these items, activities. Why there is it then okay for teachers to use material that incorporates, quote, "sexual bestiality, lewd exhibitions of nudity"? bestiality, lewd exhibitions of nudity, choreophilia, europhilia, and fetishism," and that's from your policy, just to be clear, without also seeking the same explicit permission from parents? Under the policy as it stands, teachers are required to submit notification to parents thirty days in advance that the material will be used in the classroom or given as reading assignments. Simply adding a signature line and requiring it back does not require additional work. It doesn't require additional work for the field trip, and they only gave seven days notice. In this case, it's thirty. Now, let us look at the ugly reality of the situation. Any other adult discussing and sharing this type of material outside of a school setting would be guilty of a sex crime. And while ninety-nine point nine percent of teachers and staff at LCS provide a class act, there are still bad actors, because it's human nature. The reality is that every week, we hear some sexual scandal between teachers and students across the country. Having an opt-in policy adds a layer of protection around the students and the school by ensuring parents and caregivers are paying attention and ensuring their students stay safe. Finally, having an opt-in policy provides greater transparency as to what the school system is actually teaching. This transparency is critical for building trust between parents and the school system. Parents have entrusted our children to the school, and the school needs to do everything in its power to show them why that trust should remain. Hiding behind an opt-out cop-out does not accomplish that. Therefore, opt-in is the right thing to do in Lynchburg. It's the right thing to do anywhere. It's fair, it's transparent, nothing is hidden, no assumptions can be made, it's safe for the school, it's safe for the students, it's safe for the parent. Opt-in is a win-win-win. Please modify IIA-RZ from an implicit opt-out policy to an explicit opt-in one. It's the only change we're asking. Thank you.
At this time, our next parent to speak before us will be Jennifer Staten, who is coming as an individual.
All right. That might be the voicemail, I don't know. All right, now that's, that's it in the parent category, as I can see, so I'm gonna now move on to staff. And so that will bring me here to Erin Reed, who will come on behalf of the EC Glass English Department. Welcome, Mr. Reed.
Good evening. It's good to see you all. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Erin Reed. I'm a twenty-five-year veteran of Lynchburg City Schools. As my shirt indicates, I teach at EC Glass High School. I am the chair of the English Department. I teach AP Seminar, I teach AP Language and Composition, I am the pilot teacher for the AP African-American Studies course, I teach public speaking, I am the co-coach of our award-winning forensics team, and last week, the Virginia High School League named me the Speech Teacher of the Year for the state of Virginia. And I'm here today to talk to you about the policies that the English Department at EC Glass, and as a result, Lynchburg City, has regarding materials that we teach in our classroom. First, I want to be clear about what our supplementary reading materials really mean. So first, let me talk about the adoption process, because at the heart of this, I think, is how do some of our books and supplementary materials wind up in our classes? It is a robust and thorough process, and here's how it goes. When teachers are interested in adopting a new novel for a class, the first thing that we do is we go to other educators, we go to parents, we go to our administrators, and we go to our students, and we ask them to read it, whatever the book is, and to either sign off on it, or to come to us with questions that they have. We reach out to parents of both EC Glass students and beyond, and ask for their input and their interest. Once that is garnered, once we have signatures of all of those particular stakeholders, then we bring it to central office to be adopted. It's a laborious process, and it's an important process that we get the various stakeholders who are going to be members of our community. Now, let's talk about the other side. If there is a parental concern over something that's being read in class, is there a process in place that those parents can utilize? And you know the answer is yes, but let's go ahead and review it, because I suspect at some point tonight, you're probably gonna have very honest and real questions about this process. And when I watch School Board, and I do watch School Board twice a month, and you guys asked really good questions, no matter how loudly I talk to my television, I can't seem to get you guys to hear me. So I'm gonna try to answer those for you now. When a parent comes to me with a concern, "Mr. Reed, here's a book that I see that you're teaching," first of all, how did the parent know? Is that explicit versus implicit? Well, here's the thing, they got it on the syllabus. And you know when they got it? They won, the first day. In fact, you know what I did this year, trying to utilize technology? I actually had parents contact me after they had read the syllabus that had all the titles of my books on it, to verify that they had read it and everything was good, or to contact me if they had a question about a title, and some parents did. Some of them texted me, some of them called me at school, some of them emailed me. So I want to dissuade the notion that parents don't know about the books their kids are reading until March, 'cause they get in the syllabus. That's number one. But let's say a parent does have a concern, let's say it's October, and a parent would like to reach out to me with a concern, "Mr. Reed, I saw the title, and I thought it was okay, my child has started to read this book, we're talking about it at home," which, by the way, is what we want, "and I have some concerns, so I'd like to talk to you about that book." So the parent comes in, and we talk about that. First, we make sure the parent has actually read that material, and we can talk about it honestly. And if the parent brings me those concerns, do you know what the next step is? We have an alternate book. The child is not dissuaded from class, the child is not dismissed, they get an alternate reading assignment, they continue to be a part of class, they continue to learn the skills and the valuable things in class with this alternate assignment. So I want to be clear about this idea that parents don't have a voice in our classrooms, because we, as teachers, reach out to them all the time. In fact, we want you to talk about the books that your kids are reading, they're valuable. That's how these kids are gonna become good citizens of the world. That's how they're gonna become educated voters. And so, when those parents reach out to us with, "I am so glad that your class is reading Bryan Stevenson's Just Mercy, because that is one of the things I want them to learn," that's what makes LCS, and the reading we do so incredibly important. So I wanted to provide you some context with, how do supplementary materials work? We don't just click a button on Amazon and order it, there's a process. And what happens when a parent has a concern? There is a process. If you have further questions, you know where to find me. Thank you.
We're gonna go back, we're gonna go back now to the additional parent that has arrived, Jennifer Staten.
Thank you. Sorry, I was running behind. Good evening, school board members, staff, Dr. Edwards. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Jennifer Staten, I'm here on behalf of the Lynchburg City Schools Equity Task Force. As you know, the Equity Task Force is a group of parents, educators, concerned citizens, and other members of the community. They apply to serve in this volunteer role and are appointed annually. The purpose of the Equity Task Force is to be a voice of the community for the school board on matters of equity, diversity, and inclusion. The task force met last night, and we decided that the only item discussed that we needed to bring forward is to say that we believe that the school board did their due diligence in researching the best way to ensure compliance with amendment, with the amendment established in Code, Code of Virginia, twenty-two point one dash sixteen point eight regarding parental notification of sexually explicit materials. We believe that the policy the board adopted at its January meeting addresses the new state requirements and needs no further attention or evaluation from the school board at this time. We thank you for your hard work on this, and we appreciate all that you do for us. Thanks.
All right, we will now move back to our staff, and our next speaker will be Elizabeth Clomstra, and this is coming from the Heritage High School English Department.
You got it correct, sir, thank you. Hello, my name is Elizabeth Clomstra, I'm here representing the English Department here at Heritage High School. This is my fifteenth year in education, and my fifth here at Lynchburg City Schools. The concern of the present proposal before the school board about an official opt-in process has many teachers concerned about the ramifications, both immediate and long-term. I understand that there are parents who have concerns about what is being taught in our classrooms. However, this policy does not address that issue. The first thing is, as professionals, educators, we have studied to become experts in our field, and the best ways to teach our children, we are charged and trusted with a sacred duty of the education of our children. Through our own education and constant professional development, teachers strive to find age and academically appropriate materials that meet the academic goals of all of our children. This opt-in policy hampers the ability of educators to go out and find those resources that are appropriate through our studies, excuse me. Materials that we use are readily available to parents already to address any concerns, as well as through our district, district and school websites. This policy inhibits the ability of teachers using resources already vetted by the state of Virginia, the Lynchburg City School District, and our processes in our own schools. It allows a small group of parents to place their own opinions above the expertise of teachers and administrators who have been trained on how to select these pieces and how to effectively use them to educate our students, using the educational standards put forth by the state of Virginia. Any parent who has a concern has the right to address that specific concern about their student with the individual teacher and not impact the learning of any other student in the classroom. As professional educators, we welcome these conversations all the time. This policy will also create an unneeded burden upon the teachers in having to keep track of all the paperwork that this policy would require. With the focus on making sure every student is successful and meeting the student where they are, we have these processes in place to make sure that student needs are being met. All students' needs are addressed and regularly considered in the rigorous curriculum, curriculum development at the state, local, and level, and in the classroom. Excuse me. All of the rigorous development of lessons and implementation of educational plans allow for the communication between parents and teachers on a consistent basis. Mandating teachers to maintain additional documentation above these policies and programs about the materials in the classroom does not support meeting students' individual academic needs. It requires multiple non-academic data points on over twelve hundred students that we serve here at Heritage High School. Teachers would become encumbered about these assigned pieces of papers and therefore not spend the time developing the rigorous, interesting, and much-needed lessons that our students deserve. Communication is the key factor here. If we, as teachers, keep sending home materials for parents to sign over and over and over again, we risk losing that key component of communication with our parents. We don't need to keep overwhelming them with this information. We send home the documents at the beginning of the year for teachers, for parents and teachers to sign, that allow students to, and parents, to have a communication upfront about what we are teaching that school year. Through Infinite Campus, and parents can check as often as they want the assignments I'm assigning and the grades the students are earning. We can communicate now through email, where parents can reach out in written form and meet with the teacher's concerns, with concerns with the teacher. And my personal favorite method of communication, the old-fashioned telephone, which allows us to have a consistent and constant dialogue with the parents. The truth is, education has more instant and constant contact between teachers and parents than any generation before us, and teachers are willing and eager to engage with parents in these discussions. In the end, in every school I have taught, my favorite night of the school year is often over house, when we have the ability to meet with our parents and our students, to set the tone for the year, to get excited about learning, to build those relationships, and talk about what we are going to study that year. I give parents a chance all the time to opt into my classroom, and I would love to see more parents coming in, being part of our classrooms, being engaged with our students and teachers, and being a presence in our buildings. Thank you.
Our next speaker from the staff will be Carl Luce, representing the LEA Association.
Good evening to all of you, and as always, thank you for your service to the students and staff of Lynchburg City Schools and the greater Lynchburg community. My name's Carl Luce, and I'm president of Lynchburg Education Association, and we seem to have a lot of issues to deal with tonight, so let's get to it. The first issue I'd like to address is the board's opt-out policy, and my request here is simple: don't do anything. We absolutely want parents to be aware of any sensitive reading material. We absolutely want parents to work with teachers where concerns exist. We absolutely want to provide parents with a suitable option when it's called for. And this board has already created a proper, well-thought-out policy that does exactly that. Parents are notified if controversial text is gonna be used in class and provided with means to opt out of that if they so choose. On average, teachers have to deal with two or three parent requests and find alternative assignments. Juxtapose that with an opt-in policy that would create an unwieldy mess with teachers having to now get a hundred permission slips back before proceeding with the unit. One more thing on an already overburdened employee's plate, and it's completely unnecessary: keep the policy you have, it's the reasonable thing to do. The second issue I need to address is the fifteen-fifty proposal. Lynchburg City Schools definitely needs to get this plan done and put into place for next year. We want fully accredited schools, we want to increase our graduation rates, we want to draw more business into the community and ease the tax burden on our citizens. But to do that, we've not only got to bring the best staff here, but we have to retain the staff that we have now, staff that we have spent millions of dollars training, staff that has been building relationships with families in this community, staff that continues to go above and beyond, no matter the circumstances we constantly place them in. This plan shows them that you are willing to make a commitment to them, to support them, and that you value them and their contributions to this division and this community. When I came to Lynchburg to teach many moons ago, this division was second to none in the area. It took pride in the fact that it led the region in pay and dared the surrounding communities to try and keep up. The best employees came into the city to work. Parents in the county paid tuition to send their children to Lynchburg City Schools and be taught by the best staff in the best setting with the best programs that there were to offer in the state. But over the course of the last decade, we've seen employee after employee filter out to surrounding counties, where they have fewer responsibilities and inexplicably more pay. With this plan, that stops today. Invest in your educators, and I promise you that the dividend for these kids in this community will be immeasurable. Lastly, let's talk CRT myths. Every so often, this fictional flame flares up and needs to be doused with a little reality. For those who may be ignorant of the truth, critical race theory is an academic and legal framework that denotes that systematic racism is a part of the American society and is used to explore if societal issues like Black Americans' higher mortality rate, outsized exposure to police violence, the school-to-prison pipeline, denial of affordable housing, and the rates of death of Black women in childbirth are not unrelated anomalies. That's a pretty complicated subject, which is why it's taught in law schools and graduate sociology classes, and not in K-12 public schools. The curriculum is literally on the VDOE website for all to see. Feel free to look it over. You'll note that CRT is not a part of the curriculum, never has been, never will be, because it's simply not an appropriate educational level for K-12 students. So why are we told that CRT is alive and well in public schools? Certainly, purposeful manipulation for political gain plays a part for many. For others, it's the very wrong assumption that any conversation, lesson, book, video, or play with racial undertone is CRT. It's not. The latest misguided flare-up seems to stem from a theater production that some of our students will have an opportunity to see for Black History Month. I've read the play, and while I found it to be factually accurate and completely devoid of any CRT, I came to a different conclusion than that of the main character, and I think that'll be true for a lot of our students, too. After all, that's the point, to get our children to think, to consider other points of view, and then to decide for themselves. You all have a great opportunity before you. You can educate the public on the fact that Lynchburg City Schools is about ABCs, not CRT. You can invest in our community's future by adopting the fifteen-fifty plan, and you can remind the distinguished members of City Council that Article Eight, Section Seven of the Virginia Constitution puts you in charge of our schools, not them. Thank you.
All right, we will now move to our community section of our speakers. All right, we will now move to our community section of our speakers, and we will now welcome Phil Stumpf, who will come to us at this time.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you today as a former teacher, not in LCS, but in college. But I am so thankful for what the teachers said tonight, because we experienced the same things in college, and I just applaud them for what they said. But I'm here to address you as a former parent. My children are now grown, and I have grandchildren, but all three of them went through Lynchburg City Schools and had a very good education. I want to address the district's policies regarding nondiscrimination with regard to LGBTQ+ or queer students. As professional teachers, we encourage, we learn to encourage students' innate curiosity, to grow in maturity and to learn to see different perspectives, to respect others and develop their own values by listening to the different experiences of others. We learn to meet students where they are, building on their previous experiences, and introducing new experiences at appropriate age levels. We hope they will learn to think critically, questioning what they hear and see online and around them, and we hope as they mature, they will move beyond black-and-white, either-or thinking. We try to get them to develop appropriate boundaries, and we support them in nonjudgmental ways, giving them resources to increase their self-understanding, including their understanding of their sexuality. All our teachers need training to know about LCS's nondiscrimination policy towards queer students, and they need to know how to help these students gain access to information that may be important to their understanding of themselves, that might protect them from bullying and even keep them from self-harm or suicide. Students need to know about this policy also, and to know how to receive support when they are being bullied or otherwise discriminated against by other students, staff, and yes, by teachers, too. For example, everyone needs to practice using students' desired pronouns. I am the parent of a teacher who is, I am the grandparent of a child who is exploring his gender identity. Born a girl, he identifies in most situations as a boy. He lives in a school district in another state where teachers and administration have not discriminated against him. In fact, they have been exceedingly helpful in addressing discrimination and bullying by other students, and they have probably helped to save his life. His school district has clearly stated anti-discrimination policies that are public and are implemented in practice. I want to strongly encourage our school district to do the same. Please do not listen to the voices that would divide us by fomenting fear among us. Our district has developed good anti-discrimination policies with regard to queer students. Now we need to make those policies known to all teachers, staff, and students, and to develop protocols for enforcing them. Thank you.
Our next speaker from the community is Vicente Gonzalez, representing the Queer Town Hall Group.
Welcome. I'm just waiting for it to start. Oh, is it waiting for me to start? Okay. Hi, my name's Vicente Gonzalez. My pronouns are "they/them," and I'm alumnus of E.C. Glass High School. I am here to speak out against the failure of Lynchburg City Schools to protect queer and LGBTQ students against discrimination, bullying, and harassment from fellow students and teachers, faculty, and staff. I am queer and non-binary, and my experiences as a queer student in Lynchburg City Schools has had a long-lasting impact on me as an adult. Up until 2020, there were no legal protections for LGBTQ youth in our school system. In 2020, LCS amended the anti-discrimination policy to include sexual orientation and gender identity. This was a huge win for the community and brought a real sense of hope and optimism that change was ahead of us. We still believe that change is possible. However, there are a few issues that need to be addressed. The first issue at hand is the anti-discrimination policy is not accessible to students and families, and students are not being fully informed of their legal protections. In order to find the current updated version of the anti-discrimination policy, one must look through the board documents, which most students and parents are not accustomed to doing. That's not accessible. Lastly, the anti-discrimination policy is not outlined in the parent-student handbook. Another great example of where this is happening are the resources for immigrant families. Dr. Edwards and Director Ethel Reeves did amazing work of compiling critical resources and information for immigrant families and undocumented youth. However, those resources are simply sitting on the LCS website, and immigrant communities are not fully informed of these resources. Compiling information and simply posting it on the LCS website is not enough. Lynchburg City Schools needs to actively engage with immigrant communities, and all immigrant communities, not just the Latino community. We ask for that same type of engagement with queer folks. The second major issue is the process of dealing with cases of discrimination, bullying, and harassment. It is very unclear how the school system is dealing with cases of bullying and harassment towards queer students. We are hearing a lot of conflicting information, and it seems like these issues are being delegated to Student Services. That in itself is not accessible. Not all students are going to have the support needed to resolve a conflict through Student Services. And if students are being misgendered and misnamed by teachers and administrators, then who are they supposed to turn to for help? It is very unclear if teachers, faculty, and staff are receiving the proper training to engage with and provide adequate support for queer students. Also, we have documented cases where parents have reported bullying and harassment to teachers, administrators, and Student Services, and their concerns have gone mostly unresolved. We are also hearing stories of queer students being reprimanded for defending themselves from bullying and harassment when it is the school which has failed to protect them. Lynchburg City Schools needs to immediately reexamine its process of addressing cases of discrimination, bullying, and harassment, and ensure that such a process is fully accessible to all students, regardless of their support system. I ask you to view this not as a confrontation, but rather an opportunity. An opportunity for Lynchburg City Schools to engage with our communities in more meaningful ways. We understand that LCS is facing a multitude of challenges when it comes to equity, diversity, and inclusion. Queer people can play a vital role in building bridges between communities. To advocate for queer people is to advocate for all people. The anti-discrimination policy and the process of addressing discrimination are not enough. We have to address the school-to-prison pipeline. We have to confront anti-blackness in our schools. We have to guarantee full access for disabled students. We have to continue fighting for undocumented youth. The new City Council has made it perfectly clear that they intend to roll back these protections, and we need Lynchburg City Schools and the school board to take action now. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Our next speaker from the community is Jessica Coleman, He, She, The, We organization.
No wait for me, that's right. Okay, I can do this. All right, so thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Jessica Coleman. I am a licensed professional counselor in five states, including Virginia, a licensed behavior analyst in Virginia as well, a co-facilitator of the local chapter of He, She, The, We, which is an educational support organization for caregivers and loved ones of transgender and gender diverse youth. I am also a parent of a transgender, gender diverse youth in LCS schools. During my first master's program in mental health counseling, I was a research assistant for the Social Justice Lab, who worked primarily in bullying and LGBTQ+ issues. The literature, which is substantial, supports acceptance of oneself and by others is the primary indicator of positive health outcomes, physical and mental, specifically in the LGBTQ+ population. Acceptance is defined as the action or process of being received as adequate or suitable. Every single human being is worthy of being received as they are and with respect. In my second master's program, Applied Behavior Analysis, I wrote my thesis entitled "The Influence of Acceptance and Commitment Therapy on Interactions Between LGBT Adolescents and Their Caregivers," which I would gladly go into detail on a later time. One point I cannot leave behind is that almost 2 million LGBTQ+ youth ages 13 to 24 consider suicide every single year due to the lack of acceptance from their environment. Having worked as a case manager in LGBTQ+ transitional housing due to being unhoused due to their identity, I can also tell you that I've seen the statistic of LGBTQ+ youth being 120% more likely to be unhoused than their peers is true. To zoom in, transgender or gender diverse youth are 30% more likely than that 120% to be at risk for being unhoused in relation to their LGBT or heteronormative peers. Additionally, in the past year, as mentioned, my child has come out. So this same child is in Lynchburg City Schools. So far, we have dealt with a transgender support plan that I was asked to fill out when the language and forms were clear to me that they should have been filled out collaboratively with the school, as many of the questions were specifically addressing how the school would handle certain scenarios, which I would be happy to fill out, but I imagine that you guys would also like to have that input. Unfortunately, my child has also been the recipient of bullying due to socially transitioning over the summer between school years. When my child got suspended due to reacting to a child who was bullying my child about their pronouns, it was a week-long process until we got to that point. I asked what anti-bullying measures were in place. I was instead responded to it that there were consequences in place for the other student. So while I understand that there is a responsibility on every parent to teach their children acceptance for their own mental health and social functioning, there are also evidence-based ways to incorporate this into schools, because not every parent provides that accepting environment. School can be that place of acceptance that is so crucial in developmental psychology in general, but also, as mentioned, specifically for the transgender and gender diverse population. Additionally, frameworks such as Castle is used for social-emotional learning objectives in other states around and other school districts. And at the end of the day, that anti-discrimination policy was never mentioned to me when I brought up the information about my child being bullied. It was actually texted to me last night, is the only reason I even know where it is. This, again, is there, but it's not accessible, and it wasn't ever discussed with me. So having a plan and knowing the plan really helps ease some of the anxiety, especially when you're someone who's having to carry the weight of discrimination that goes for students and parents. Professionally, I can tell you that the prevention is the best line of defense for an ailment, physical or mental, and just having faculty aware and supporting each student with best practices. So especially since gender-affirming care also includes social, behavioral, psychological, and medical care, that is the standard, so establishing that environment of safety within the schools as defined by the American Psychological Association and the World Health Organization. That is my parental right to ask for my child to receive the same standard of respect as every other student. So I would ask that, in addition to everyone else that has mentioned it, the anti-discrimination policy be more visible, be more accessible, and that also the process within that be able to be more readily available to parents as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker from the community will be Reverend Carl B. Hutchison Jr., Dr. Carl B. Hutchison Jr., representing the NAACP.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Black Chair, Superintendent Edwards, members of our school board and staff, and our citizens. I come tonight as a citizen and as the president emeritus of the oldest, boldest, maddest, baddest civil rights organization in the world. That is the NAACP. And I represent that organization, as well as all of those persons who are now participants in our podcast. Over 500 of our citizens participate in that podcast three days a week. The reason I come, I sat here and listened. I listened to the first speaker, who indicated that he was opposed to a trip, a trip in which learning takes place. I heard comments, a comment that he was opposed to the policies that the school system has adopted, a policy which encourages opt-in rather than opt-out. And I started to think, maybe we just ought to just go on and do all of the silly stuff that some people want us to do. Do we need to opt-in for our football teams, our basketball teams, our sports teams? Do we need to opt-in for our bands or our drama department? I think we should opt-in for all of that, because I'm sure there's some parents that don't want their students playing football, talking about critical race. You can carry that to the athletic field. I don't want my kid play because he might have to block for a Black kid, or he might have to block or run for a white kid. No, that doesn't make sense. And those who want to create the division in our community, I believe are doing it wrong. But I'm not one to get angry, trying to get better in my life. When I ran for City Council, I ran as an at-large candidate because I believed in my heart that if I couldn't represent all of the citizens, then I couldn't serve on that council. And I was fortunate enough to win every time I ran. I simply say this: I would like to invite those people who seem to have disagreements with the way our school system is run, with our school board, with our administration, with our teachers, because you embarrass the teachers whenever you speak up and speak in terms of which you speak. I want to invite you to something so that you can learn. I want to invite you to the African-American Committee, which will meet at Social Services Building, 3 o'clock this Thursday. I want to invite you to that meeting. And I think you might get a gist of how difficult, how important. And if I could, I would invite you to the subcommittee, which we also serve on, the subcommittee that has to deal with education, because we sit there and ponder and are concerned about all of our, all of our kids. The last thing I want to say is, I went to pay my taxes not long ago, found out I'm still a citizen, and that's all we are, citizens of this community. But this community needs to get itself together so that we might be one. Thank you.
To my colleagues, Paul Key was our next community speaker, as stated in the list, but I think Bishop Key had to leave. So that would bring us now to our one phone message.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Williams, and I'm a parent of an LCS student. I am calling regarding the opt-out policy and regarding instructional materials with sexually explicit content in Mayor Reed's letter encouraging the board to change to an opt-in policy. After carefully reading all of the LCS documents attached to tonight's agenda concerning instructional resources, it is clear this change is unnecessary. One, Mayor Reed states that it is unclear to us how using a parent request process will ensure proper parental notification of said materials. The request system puts onus on the parents, not the division. Unquote. In the document titled "Instructional Materials," it states that LCS will follow, quote, "a process by which principals will provide written notice to parents at least 30 days prior to the use of any instructional materials with sexually explicit content that (a) specifically identifies the instructional materials and (b) informs parents of their right to review such materials." Two, she states that the council is also, quote, "concerned with the appeal process as the policy only speaks to a conversation for solution, nothing more." This is a non-issue. As LCS policy states that if parents object to certain instructional materials, the school informs parents of their right to have their child used upon request in a nonpunitive manner, alternative instructional materials that do not include sexually explicit content. Three, she's asking for a policy with associated communications from the division that informs parents to decide at the front end. Her very wording contradicts her argument against the opt-out policy. Her worry that parents will not receive the communications from the school and miss the opportunity to opt their child out of certain material also holds true for the opt-in policy, except at a much larger scale. If parents miss that communication, their child will not have access to any material. By enrolling their child in LCS, parents have already opted into the curriculum and classroom materials that have been carefully chosen. LCS teachers are degreed professionals with state-required certifications. The material they choose to use for instructional purposes must align with state standards and must be reviewed for sexually explicit content. An opt-out policy, I'm sorry, an opt-in policy would be a huge burden for LCS families and teachers. Four, how would an opt-in policy even work? If all parents and caregivers had to approve all instructional materials at the beginning of the year, what happens if a parent is non-responsive? What happens to the instructional materials? Will students be able to access any materials without express written consent? How will students conduct research? Will the library be off limits? Will our classroom libraries begin to look like? Will our classroom libraries begin to look like Florida's where shelves are covered and books are pulled out of children's hands because they haven't been approved? Five, an entirely adequate policy is in place for parents who wish to opt their child out. The school board needs to spend its time focusing on real issues facing our schools, not wasting time with contrived culture wars. Thank you for your time.
Members of the board, this concludes the individuals that we have of record for public comments. I do want to say to the board that you have demonstrated your willingness to hear from the public is so important, and we want to thank each of you who had the opportunity to share tonight. Each of us heard you, even if we didn't respond, we were listening very carefully to everything you had to say. Do want to remind the public and those who are watching that in our unfinished business section tonight, in J2, we will be discussing instructional resources. Having said that, thank all of you for sharing during our public comment section, and we will now move on to the next item on our agenda, which is an opportunity for us to really see some shining in our E Student Representative Comments, and Dr. Edwards will be on our guest tonight.
Absolutely. So each month, in addition to our stellar high school student reps, we've invited other schools, middle schools, elementary school students, to join us and share some of the wonderful things that are occurring in their schools. And I like what Reverend Dr. Hutchison said, we have citizens. So we have some of our youngest citizens here to share with us what's going on in their schools. So I'm inviting Principal Kelly Bevins, who is the principal of Darrington Elementary School, and she has two of our stellar citizens and students at Darrington. It's Zaimir Vassal and Koda Kaps.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, thank you to all the board members for allowing us the opportunity to present this evening. My name is Kelly Bevins, and I am the proud principal of Darrington Elementary School for Innovation. Tonight, I am excited to introduce two of our DESI world changers, Mr. Zaimir Vassal and Ms. Koda Kaps. They are here to share collections of reasons why DESI is special to all of our students.
Ms. Bevins, you might want to pull the mic.
Hello, my name is Zaimir Vassal, and today I'll be presenting top 10 reasons why our DESI students love our school. Reason number one, we love our teachers. Reason number two, we love violin because we get to express how we feel through an instrument.
Reason three, we love the STEM Lab because we get to do cool experiments, science rocks and STEM sparkles. Reason four, we have fun events like the Winter Science Festival, where we get to make baking soda ornaments, ooblaq, and discover how polar bear blubber works.
Reason number five, back to school night was fun because we got hot dogs, fresh fruits, and veggies, and we got to shop at the book fair.
Reason number six, we have a DESI leadership program where we get to host special events like Pause for a Cause. Reason seven, we love doing fun nations in just words during our literacy block because we get to pet Mama Owl and learn to read and spell words.
Reason number eight, we love our Excel because it helps us grow in reading and math. Reason number nine, we love our resource classes because we get to do fun activities like art projects and field day.
Reason number 10, we love using technology to do innovative projects like create and print 3D models and code with robots.
At DESI, we, at DESI, we want to be world changers.
Oh my goodness. Those two young people can read better than I can already.
Don't go anywhere. I do have a special gift for you after we're done, but I saw we want to be world changers, and I'm just going to tell you right now, you already are world changers. Thank you for the presentation. In our second presentation from the fabulous Dunbar Middle School, we have Principal Dr. Danny Rule and another fabulous student rep. Now, help me make sure I pronounce your name correctly. Is it Amare?
Amare.
Amare.
That's beautiful.
It is beautiful. Ms. Amare Brown from Dunbar.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the school board, Dr. Edwards and colleagues of Lynchburg City Schools. As we welcome a Dunbarian to the podium, I'd like to take the opportunity to share the unique Dunbar experience that all middle school students have, excuse me, Dunbar Middle Schools students have this Thursday as part of our Dunbar Centennial, Centennial Celebration. Dunbar has worked to collaborate with the Academy of the Arts and the Virginia Children's Theater to bring a stage performance of a real-life example of racism's impact in an urban school. Based on a true story in this present age of social media, this production focuses on the power of words posted on a social media platform and how they impact our children today, a very real connection with our students. Every family was provided the script, and every student that returned their permission slip form will attend this SOL-aligned experience and learning opportunity. Now, I'm excited to present to you a phenomenal student, which represents your very own Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School for Innovation. Amare Brown is an outstanding student, both in the school and our community. I've had the opportunity to see her from a kindergarten scholar at Darrington all the way to an eighth-grade scholar and leader at Dunbar Middle School. She will, and I'm holding her to this, be a future leader in Lynchburg City School, or Lynchburg City, maybe the school system. Without further ado, the main Dunbar attraction tonight, Amare Brown.
Good evening, Superintendent Edwards and school board members. My name is Amare Brown, and I'm the representative for Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School for Innovation. This evening, I will be presenting to you our school's updates. So for our updates, Dunbar Middle School is doing exceptionally well in all departments of the school, which includes sports, theater, and everything in between. So for things that's been going on throughout our school, Dunbar's very own theater program, hosted by the Carters, which is Mr. and Mrs. Carter, just took the show Aladdin Junior on the road. They went to Atlanta to compete with other theater groups from all around, as they went on and won the Excellence in Participation Award. For sports, last season, the sports were tennis, football, soccer, volleyball, track, cross-country, and still football. Of course, Dunbar took home many wins and some losses, but that has only made us better. As for this sports season, we have basketball and wrestling going on. The Lady Poets have been bringing home all of the victories undefeated. As for our after-school programs, we've been doing really well in that department as well. We have our iron program, which is stationed all around our district. It is in Dunbar and glass, I believe, which is flare powered by iron and glass. It's a program for leaders, and we have been encouraging more people to come and join this school year. Our iron directors are trying to take our students on a college tour to the University of Lynchburg and hopefully Liberty, which is an awesome experience for all. Also, Dunbar has our, with our Dunbar Middle School seventh graders. And here are some pictures of our show choir, orchestra, band, wrestling groups, and the Carters.
Good-looking pictures.
Thank you. And of course, some more pictures, just had so many, couldn't choose. So our school has been studying for SOL since day one, and we've been preparing our eighth graders to continue to raise the bar as they move on to their next school. The teachers have been very involved with the students this year, ensuring that they get the best education and knowledge to succeed in the testing. Also, Dunbar has recently participated in winter growth assessments, which is to gather data to see how much knowledge the students have obtained since the fall growth assessments. So continuing on, we have our Student Government Association, which is also known as the SGA, but it is our seventh and eighth graders. As for our group, we have four eighth-grade students, which is William Hoffman, Olivia Judy, Inaya McCoy, and Lucy G. Our seventh and eighth graders have had an amazing opportunity to run for our, excuse me, they have had an excellent opportunity to run for a placement in that group. Will is the president, and also we have the vice president, secretary, and treasurer. Our Spanish teacher, Mr. Fielder, is running all the meetings, and these individuals come together to find different ways to improve our school. As for other activities we have going on around the school, we have the 20-book challenge, and that is where students compete to read the most books by each incentive, and there are different rewards, each incentive that you go through. The first incentive was an ice cream party, and the second was a pass to be able to skip out on an assignment. And now we wait for the last two. By the end of the year, whichever two students from each grade reads the most books, the English teachers throughout the school, SRO, and other staff will go to the students' houses and bring a book bag full of books, coupons, and other different gifts. After that, we have other rewards, and these rewards are for students who really just show up with three or fewer absences per quarter and only up to one referral. The first reward was an ice cream social, and the second reward was a school dance during the day. Over 300 students were able to attend and show off their dance moves. And here are other pictures of the topics that I just spoke about. So Dunbar has been doing this really thing, this really great thing, that has been led by my favorite principal in the whole school district, Mr. Rule. We have been doing town hall meetings almost every quarter, and it's just where we keep the students in the flow of everything and what's been going on throughout the school. In the meetings, we talk about test scores, whether they're increasing, which is all the time, just to let y'all know, and as well as the behavior in the school and expectations for the weeks ahead. So now, this year is a very special year for Dunbar. This is Dunbar's 100th year. We have been going through it, going through a lot of great things in these past 100 years. And this year, on Dunbar Day, which is this Thursday, all Dunbar Middle School students have an opportunity to attend a field trip to the Academy Center of the Arts as part of our 100-year celebration, which I personally think is a really great thing because we need to celebrate this. This is, this is a great learning opportunity for our students because it's just part of history, our students anyways. So, yeah, and so we have T-shirts on sale as we celebrate our 100th year at Dunbar, and you can buy your very own DMS 100-year T-shirt. And that is the logo for it. And thank you, that's all I have tonight.
So I do have some gifts, and we will take a picture with the students. It takes a lot of courage to stand up, and Amare's like, yes, it does. It takes a lot of courage to stand up and speak to the adults around this table, and also know that you're on TV and that's being captured. And I give these young people a big round of applause, because I don't think I would have been able to do that at your age, and you rocked it. So awesome, absolutely amazing. It speaks to the leadership that our staff are modeling for students, the opportunities that they're giving students, and most importantly, the inclusion of their voice. They have something to say and something to share, and it matters, and we need to really stop and listen to them. So we are grateful for you being here, and I do have a couple of gifts, and we will take a picture.
And Dr. Edwards, I just want to say a thing, if I may. Amare, you did a fantastic job.
Thank you so much.
Nothing can disrupt a speaker more than having a technical difficulty. Been there, done that, and you handled it like a pro. I think that is outstanding.
Thank you.
And to piggy, to piggyback on Mr. Truss's well-timed statement as Dr. Edwards makes these presentations, even our high school reps that will come on in a minute, it's just amazing. I was just thinking about, we can't be in Washington to hear the president tonight, but they're going to clap for him at certain times if there's something that is worth clapping for, I guess. We stood, we clapped, we gave these young people an opportunity to one day do that, give the State of the Union address, because they received that kind of preparation while a part of Lynchburg City Schools. I think we ought to give all of ourselves a hand for being a part of such a great school division as Dr. Edwards brings these before these young people.
Yes, we're going to take a picture. These present and future leaders.
Doesn't that yet appear what they're going to be?
And don't move, because we have a lot of family members that have been a good shot, too.
Congratulations, parents.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good degree.
It was absolutely amazing.
All right, my baby.
Once again, thank you to all, that, Dr. Rule, thank you for your presentation. Thank all of you tonight. All right, we're going to continue under our student reps. Once again, we're one of those school divisions that afford our students to participate at this high level in preparing them for greatness, even now and in the future. I understand that Cameron is going to present to us through technology, and we will go with her first if we're ready, and Cameron will
And Cameron will share uh, representing EC Glass. And then Kaylin will follow representing Heritage High School.
Good evening. Awesome. So we've had a very busy month at EC Glass. We are looking forward this month to celebrating Valentine's Day through selling candy grams. The student council will be selling candy grams this week and they will be given out on Valentine's Day. And they can be given to friends and teachers and whatnot. Over the weekend, our Scholastic Bowl team placed fourth in their regional tournament. Last Wednesday, we had National Signing Day. George White signed to William &amp; Mary. Laverius Gilbert signed to Virginia Union University. Chris Walker Wells signed to AB Football. And Jerry Cashwell signed to Christopher Newport University. We are very proud of all four of them.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Our Glass Theater Club is currently hosting a Super Bowl clothing drive. They are collecting shoes and socks. New socks and new or used shoes are collected. There will be different boxes to represent each team of the Super Bowl so you can vote for who you would like to see win. Our EC Glass Athletics have done a great job the past month. Tomorrow, our boys and girls swim and dive, have their regional tournament. And on Thursday, the boys' basketball faces LCA at LCA. And our girls' basketball faces LCA at home. We wish good luck to all of our basketball teams as they play LCA this Thursday. Thank you.
Wait for him to get out of that. Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
So it's also been a very busy month at Heritage. Let me, okay, so our JROTC Drill Team competed in the R2 Regional Competition last week. The Color Guard placed third overall and the Unarmed Regulation Platoon placed fifth overall. Congratulations to Christopher Seawright, who was chosen as the true pioneer of the day. Uh, the wrestling team has been very busy as well. They've had, they had six champions in a total of thirteen wrestlers make it to the regional competition. The senior wrestlers also celebrated Senior Day. So down on the bottom, we have all of our senior wrestlers with their families and the posters that they get made for them. And something else that isn't on the slide, but they also, they won the regional championship, which is the first in LCS history for our wrestling team, which is very exciting. The swim team has also had many wins so far this season. They also celebrated their senior night this past week. There's our seniors. And good luck to them as I believe right now they're competing in their regional competition. Pioneer Theaters' Winter Production of Cabaret is opening soon. Opening night is February seventeenth and the show closes on the twenty-fifth. We've been working very hard on this and we're very excited. That's the last slide, but I just wanted to say that um, our, our teachers right now have been really, really stellar. This is kind of the time of the year when everyone gets a little bit burnt out. You know, we passed the, the first semester and we're kind of in, in a lull right now. But all of our teachers have been very, very great at encouraging us to keep going and preparing us for, whether it be graduation or just exams or finals at the end of the year. And all of the other students kind of talked about the opportunities that they have. And that rings true for Heritage as well. And I know that I and everybody else at the school and in the district is really grateful for the opportunities that are provided by the board and the teachers. So just wanted to say that as well. Thank you for your time.
That was so well said and well received. Thank you for sharing that. Uh, both of you, Cameron and Kaylin, for your uh, leadership uh, informing us what's going on in our high school. So thank you very, very much. We appreciate it. All right, you all, we're going to now move to Section F. I think we can press our way a little bit here and get into our school board member reports. I'm going to call out each committee and if the designated person has something to share, we will hear from you. If not, we'll move on to the next uh, item under that section. Uh, F1, Finance and Facilities Committee, our Chair, Dr. Kim Sinha.
We met last week on Wednesday um, and discussed a number of things. One which is coming up on our agenda. Um, the nineteen ninety-three agreement between City Council and the School Board regarding um, return of fund balance. Uh, we'll have more to say on that when it comes up on the agenda. We also um, discussed concerns about the calendar and where we are. We are a little bit behind, but that's through no fault of our own. We're waiting on guidance from both the state and City Council on the parameters. But uh, we anticipate that the time of our school board work session this month, we should be caught up and back on track. Our top priorities, um, among other things are the fifteen fifty salary plan. And also um, keeping our health insurance reserve um, in the black. Uh, we've had increasing um, number of premiums and costs that associated with that. As you know, health costs do increase above the rate of inflation and so that's always a cause for concern. Um, and then we um, I think that's pretty much it. Um, it's a lot more to talk about later in the meeting.
Madam Chair, you ran a very nice meeting the other, very good meeting the other day. Any questions for our Finance and Facilities Chair? Thank, thank you, Dr. Sinha. Uh, F2, Governor's School Committee, Dr. Gupta.
The Gov. School met last Wednesday. They approved the calendar, academic calendar for next year. And um, the other discussion was centered around if there's a school choice, legislation goes through, will students be able to um, apply for Gov. School? You know, going into private school. So, Dr. Smith said he's open, but there needs to be more discussion on this. As long as the districts are okay with it, they should be fine.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Any questions for Dr. Gupta? I must say, as I get around and move about, Dr. Gupta, you're making a strong presence on that committee. They always refer to you and what you are contributing to that group. So thank you so much, sir. Uh, F3, Law Regional School Committee, Dr. Carter.
The Law Regional School, we had a wonderful presentation of the SOAR program. And these are students that are for, that are in the general education um, population, but that may have behavioral problems. I may have, they have behavioral problems. And so this is like an alternative school for them. And one of the key factors to see how they are doing is that they return to their base school. But they're doing so well, some may not want to return, but that's our goal, is to transition them back to their base school. Right now, there are four students. And the presentation was done by Dr. Lewis, she's a licensed clinical social worker. And Ms. Splitzer, who is a um, with the BA, BCA, BCBA specialist there. And there are room for six students, so right now they are, looks like they're going to fill that, to fill those positions up. And it really does take into account social, emotional learning. They're also, will do SOLs like um, the other students in their base schools. And the fact is that one of the, our SPED director here said that she had, one of those students from our program, that she had never seen that student smile or talk. And now the student is smiling and talking. And these are students that may have had escalations that lasted three to four hours. And now they're being able to de-escalate the student within three to five minutes. Just working one-on-one, doing the things that the student needs. And they're taking the, taking the core curriculum as other students. So we're just happy for that program and how it is really benefiting people and the students. We also talked about the budget. And also the SPED directors were talking and still concerned that the federal government was supposed to fund special education forty percent. And it's only gotten to ten to twelve percent. But now parents are more, uh, and parents are um, have advocates and other people that are pressuring the SPED directors for more services. And sometimes the service is not required, but they're not taking no for an answer. And so it's just difficult and we're going to see a lot more if, if a SPED director leaves. I mean, if, some have been there for twenty-five years and they said they've never seen the aggression and some of the difficulties they're experiencing um, like they are now with these um, programs. And to the point where they have to start meetings again. And so we just ask that um, if we can advocate for anything, that we advocate for more funding for these, for SPED.
Thank you, Dr. Carter, I D E A and all of those things. So important. Any questions for her? Uh, pushback on further unfunded mandates in that area, that's um, that's important. Dr. Carter, we want to roll with you. You're going to uh, talk to us uh, again in our next uh, committee group on the STEM Academy.
The STEM Academy. In November, there were mock interviews, mock interviews that the seniors participated in. And the interviewers were twenty individuals from different organizations in Lynchburg. And the students got to really participate in interviews, I previously said. And they were asked twenty questions and also were provided with twenty, twenty different feedbacks. So they can get prepared for their internships, interviews, and just for the practice, which is great. The seniors also participated in an OSHA program called Stop the Bleed. They were able to get a certificate in that, how to really adequately prepare for different types of wounds. And there have been speakers from different programs, from Sweetbry College, Randolph-Macon, Cloudfit, BWTX, and others. The juniors have participated in financial literacy, literacy to really know why it's important to have a credit score. They also learn minor medical procedures like how to intubate and also the IV process. How to do an IV. Also, there's a new professor who is Mike Wilson. He is with Hurt &amp; Profit and now he's teaching a blueprint reading class. And that's going very well. And that's a win-win, a partnership for STEM and also PR for Hurt &amp; Profit. So that's great. Senior students have begun their internships at six, sixteen different programs. And Mrs. Cash has been visiting various, she's the director. She's been visiting various schools in the district. And the STEM Academy, their main information session was February the first. Applications are already coming in and the applications is a hundred percent online. Applications are due April the first and students will be notified around April the twenty-first if they have been offered a position or place at the STEM. February the twenty-eighth, Zach Oxadine, he'll be here to speak. He's talked in, in the White House with the STEM Alliance Academy there. And he's going to be here to talk about the importance of a two-year college education. And that's February the twenty-eighth. That's all.
Thank you so much, Dr. Carter. Any questions to Dr. Carter relative to the STEM Academy? And finally, uh, Dr. Carter, share with us as the Chair of our Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee.
We will have a meeting tomorrow at four thirty.
All right. We will leave it at that for now and others can comment during board comments. All right, Six, Partners in Education, Dr. Sinha and Mrs. Preston.
All right, we met um, January twelfth at BWX Technologies. A really nice office space for us. Um, and among other things, we got a LCS update from Crystal Grant, who is our supervisor for student engagement and mentoring, to uh, talk about some success they're having with a mentoring program that's being piloted at Lincoln Middle School. Facilitates small groups with students. Um, and these are community volunteers. And, and this may serve as a model for our partners in other um, schools to uh, to follow. They focus on leadership skills and development. Students can focus on their natural strengths and skills rather than the behaviors they may present with. They provide mentoring through artwork. They advocate for peer accountability. They push one another to excel in their courses um, and set high expectations for each other. Chick-fil-A has been working with them um, to develop posi- um, positive customer service skills, which are transferable to just regular interactions with people. Uh, among the successes, our grades have increased among the students who are engaged with the mentoring program. And discipline referrals have decreased among students who are engaged in this program. So it's showing real promise and uh, grateful to our um, student engagement and mentoring uh, folks to get that going. We also celebrated and acknowledged the wonderful partnership we have with uh, West Lynchburg Baptist Church and how they stepped up and, and helped us out when we were doing repairs to TC Miller. As you know, during that cold snap over the holidays, some pipes burst and it was considerable water damage. And it's just wonderful to have a partner like them to step up and assist us in our time of need. So once again, we're very grateful and it, just two highlights of how our partners in education are a valuable resource for us. And as always, we talk about advocacy. Um, we have so, so many partners who are advocates for the schools, who believe in city schools, who value our city schools and do numerous things to help our students, teachers, and staff. And so, again, if uh, anybody out there is interested, your business, church, club, whatever, would like to be a partner in education, reach out to uh, Ms. Ethel Reeves at LCS and she'll hook you up. Uh, we were to have a meeting uh, last week, but it was postponed because of the weather delay, so I have no further report.
Okay, thank you, uh, Dr. Sinha on that. Uh, Mrs. Preston, anything you want to add to it, if I'm looking at it right? Okay, uh, on, before we move to the next one, I thought it was very good for you to bring up West Lynchburg, West Lynchburg Baptist. Dr. Edwards, have we all ready? Do we have plans and specially, special, a special recognition or acknowledgement of them for really stepping up to the place? Oh, you're talking about rising to the challenge. They really need to get this from me rather than me getting something like that. Do we have anything planned for that or no?
We definitely will.
All right, well, leave it alone. That's all I want to know. Very good. We'll move on to the next uh, piece, the Education Foundation, Mr. Tross and Dr. Sinha.
Uh, we met with the Ed Foundation uh, last month. Um, and talked about numerous things. Um, one of the things the Ed Foundation is, is looking for is um, needs, opportunities to apply some of the funds that they raised towards um, different projects and endeavors. And one thing, Mr. Tross and I tried to promote was more emphasis on um, CTE in our schools. The, we um, recognize there's a lot of emphasis in, in college prep and going on to college and scholarship programs. And that's all really good and important. And we honor our top um, seniors at graduation time, most of whom are college-bound. But we feel it presents perhaps a little bit of a bias against uh, students who are, and that's probably too strong a term, but we feel it'd be better to, uh, we'd be better serving our students um, to acknowledge in some way, uh, students who excel in career technology. Um, how we would do that remains to be seen, but it's something we want to pay more attention to or we're encouraging the Ed Foundation to pay more attention to. So um, we look forward to that. And um, I guess we have coming up the Breakfast with the Superintendent, which is a Ed Foundation sponsored event in March. I forget what day that is, but uh, can look on our calendar to find out when that is.
Cover everything.
You got it all, fantastic.
All right, thank you, Dr. Sinha and Mr. Tross. A fine, fine job. And lastly, uh, the Beacon of Hope, Mr. Andrews and Mrs. Preston.
So, two things. Uh, Beacon of Hope has their second summer internship program coming around this year. It's a paid internship for rising juniors and seniors. Uh, it takes place June fifth through the thirtieth. Applications are currently open right now, or the process is currently open right now. Deadline for those juniors and seniors to apply is March the fifteenth. And there are currently more than seventeen businesses, businesses and partners that are onboard that have been invited to be a part of this internship. And as a shameless plug, the Lynchburg Fire Department is one of the partners. So I'm excited about that because we're the first to represent public safety, so I'm, I'm super excited about that. Um, and then of course, the second thing is they're doing their Hope Expo talk coming to the Academy on March the third. I think everybody's aware of that, at seven PM. Uh, there's a slate of amazing speakers, including some recent LCS graduates. So tickets can be purchased on the Beacon of Hope website, so.
Wow.
I don't know if Mrs. Preston has anything to add, so.
No, that's fine. As, as he said, the names of the people that are, are the speakers are on the website. But there are some names that are familiar to all of us and, and some that are LCS recent graduates. So that's an exciting thing.
All right, looking forward to. All right. Looking forward to being there. All right. Thank you, Mr. Andrews and Ms. Preston. And thank you to each of the board members that presented tonight. All of this is focused on student achievement and how we can even get our community engaged to help us to do that. So thank you very much. Section G now, our finance report, Dr. Edwards for Mrs. Kapazi.
Yes. So just one quick update before Ms. Kapazi goes over the report, that there are two expenditure reports. One is in the old format. And then one is in the format that we had recently switched to. And since the agenda was already published, rather than taking down one and swapping out the other, I just added the revised one. But if anybody had a question as to why are there two expenditure reports, it's just in two different formats. But the one that says revised is the more current one. Thank you, Ms. Kapazi, for putting that together. And I'm going to turn it over to you to talk briefly about finance.
Okay, so we'll start at the top. Our adopted budget of one hundred and six million for this year. The prior year's encumbrance gets added to that of one point six million. Brings us to our adjusted budget of one hundred and seven point nine million. I also wanted to comment, Dr. Day brought to light something that may not be recognized, that the request that was brought to City Council regarding the return of fund balance, that is all requested to go to capital improvement, which means it will not go to this fund balance return because that is money that comes to the school district. The capital, the capital improvement project stays with the city. Doesn't mean that it doesn't go to us, but it's, goes under that capital improvement. So that just being the difference that money that was coming here to, to pay for other things outside of capital improvements would show there as an increase to our budget. So regardless of how they, they vote on that, whether it's all, nothing, or some of it, none of it will show here, just so you know that. You can see that our revenues and expenditures summary from last year in December to this year in December, we are a little bit ahead of the game. As I said, we did just put out a spending freeze, so we're hoping to incentivize getting those items paid for faster. Health insurance reserve is still stable. So here is a change regarding our health insurance summary. We went back and we reviewed the, the payables to see. In previous reports, what you were looking at was just the receipts and the claims. So now we went back and we looked and said, okay, so this eight hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted for this year, the about five hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted for last year, where is that? So it is there, and we are now including that. We, my, you know, being unfamiliar, I wasn't confident putting that in prior, but we have reviewed it. And so you can see in the green portion area where it says twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, the one point zero eight six in twenty twenty-one is what they had listed as fund balance for the health insurance. This three point eight million in twenty twenty-two is that payable amount that I'm talking about. So you can see our year-to-date balance is no longer in the red. It is one point five million. That has been discussed with Finance and Facilities Committee. And yes, it is in the red right now, or in the black right now. Does not mean that it'll stay that way by the time we get to June. And it is also not a sustainable plan going forward. So Finance and Facilities Committee is on top of that. As Dr. Edwards stated, there is the Board Expenditure Report ending December thirty-one, which is the revised updated edition. And that should be the only addition that you see going forward for expenditures. And the revenue report is the only revenue report that's there. Are there any questions about either of those?
Questions, Dr. Brennan and Dr. Gupta.
I think it's great that we're now in the black with the health insurance summary. I still, I'm sorry, I still have a little trouble understanding where the excess funds came from. I understand the receipts. I understand the disbursements. I'm not sure what you mean by payables. I guess that's my big question. And then number two is on the, the section above, this December two thousand and twenty-two, it says year-to-date balance is still minus two point three million dollars. So is that correct or are we plus?
That is the monthly amount with no, with, with no fund balance. That is what it is costing us month over month with just.
You said, you said fund balance. You mean fund balance?
Fund balance, just under health insurance. It's not even the health insurance reserve. The health insurance reserve is completely separate, it's over with the city. So basically, we have two pots of money. We have the employer's money, and we have the employee and employer money towards premiums. So the receipts, that money towards premiums, that's what we've been looking at. What we haven't been looking at is this additional money that was also budgeted on the employer's side to help fund the claims, which equals both of these instead of just one of those. So what you're looking at in the month-to-month is the just one of those, just the receipts, just the premiums versus the claims. This is why it shows drastically in, you know, the red, is because we're not, we're not including that additional money. And this is why exactly we're saying it's not sustainable. Because without this additional money coming from LCS and not the employees and the other, you know, participants, being Laurel and STEM and CBGS, those are also. But those groups are not contributing towards this additional money going to pay those claims, going to pay that overage. So when we're just looking at the premiums, I'm sorry, Dr. Senha, if you can.
Just to clarify, when we reviewed, when we did our budget request last year, one of those additional requests was eight hundred thousand dollars to supplement the health reserve. That wasn't being taken into account in our regular reporting. Now it is because it is money designated for that purpose. But the issue there is.
The, the increase in, in insurance premiums that we asked for, that ten percent, it was an increase that was, in addition to, that was eight hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. So can I still ask, the, on that section that has November, December, two thousand and twenty-two, it says year-to-date total minus two point three. And that's year-to-date. So that's this year, starting July the first to now. But at the bottom, we have year-to-date balance is one point five, one point six million.
Right, because, because that year-to-date up top is not including that additional money.
Okay.
So down below, we've now included that additional money.
Okay.
If you see the, the receipts and the disbursements, they'll match the year-to-date total on the month-to-month. It's that starting number from July one.
Okay. So last question, and I appreciate you taking the time to answer these. So will our starting balance for next month be the one point five million or one point six million? Well, is that where we'll be next month, we'll have that plus, or will it be the minus two?
No, the three point eight is not going to change. That's from the beginning of the year.
Right. I didn't ask three point. I'm asking.
Right. What's going to change is the, the receipts and disbursements. And the year-to-date balance will change, but it's not going to go up to the top.
But when we get year-to-date, like you've done before, for this, for the, for the beginning of, of February, will it be that minus of one point six, or will be the plot, the, the, I'm just saying, the, the minus of two point four will be the plus of one point six?
My intent was to continue showing the difference with and without because that's overage. So my intent was to go month-to-month without the overage to show you what LCS is putting in outside of the premiums.
Okay, that's great. So that, so the, the minus will continue as far as what you have, but the excess funds will not be shown in that section, but shown below.
Right.
Thank you very much.
So we know what the true cost is.
Dr. Gupta?
I just have a question about the math. So now you're figuring in the additional eight hundred thousand dollars, correct? But the change in the balance is greater than eight hundred thousand dollars. How does that happen?
Because it wasn't just eight hundred thousand. Eight hundred thousand was just for this year. There was also a ten percent increase to the premiums and an additional amount of money from last year.
Yep, got it.
Dr. Gupta?
There were two amounts, as we discussed in the Finance Committee meeting.
I'm clear now.
Eight hundred and two hundred, so those counting. Just to clarify, we know that the premiums, we are self-funded health insurer. Premiums, we take in about eight hundred thousand, and our expense has been over a million dollars. So no matter what you add, there'll be a gap of about two hundred thousand going forward. Right now, currently, you're backfilling it about a million dollar back into all that deficit we had up to this point.
Unless we fully fund the expense through premiums paid by the employer and the employee and whatever percentages or dollar amounts we have.
If I'm taking home ten dollars and I'm spending fifteen dollars, that five-dollar deficit in my bank account will stay.
Correct.
Unless I start a second job and bring that five dollars back, right? So that, that's how the health insurance is working. Now, having said that, on the revenue side, if you look at the miscellaneous category, and there's a two hundred thousand for bus rentals, hundred and fifty thousand for dual enrollment, and about twenty-five thousand for summer tuition. Last year, too, it was zero realized, and this year, too, zero realized. So my concern is, are we overinflating our revenue by almost three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars? Or there's an adjustment in your debit credit book? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I hear what you're saying. I have not done a comparison from last year's to this year's to know whether that exists, but I can definitely look into it.
If you, the sheets you gave us today, the column for twenty-two and column for twenty-one has zero, zero.
Right. What I'm saying is, without knowing the history, the, I, I can see that it says zeros, but I wouldn't know without doing a little investigation why.
But that money is accounted in your revenue for the year.
All right, Dr. Day and then Dr. Carter.
So I have another explain-my-confusion question for you. This one's probably pretty simple. I'm looking at the revenue report for December twenty-two. And the right-hand side has the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, which is over at this point. And I'm looking at those percentages in the right-hand column, the bottom line, coming with Virginia, forty-three point eight two percent. Does that mean the state has given us less than half of the money we were expecting from them?
I can't answer that. And the reason I can't answer that is I, I have not, again, reviewed this to know exactly why we did or did not receive, such as you're saying, fifty percent of what was expected here, fifty percent here. I, I just don't have the history.
But it's year-to-date, so it would be approximately half, right?
No, this is last year. This is twenty-one, twenty-two.
It's still comparing apples to apples, year-to-date.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
During this time last year.
That's what the percentage.
So it's only through January, Dr. Day?
On both the.
Or through December?
Oh, for the month ending December thirty-first. So it's not the full year yet, at least in this report.
Right.
But lots of water's been under the bridge since then. It's just not showing up in this report.
It's just showing you a comparison of, here's our revenue in December twenty twenty-two. If we look back to December twenty-one.
I thought this was for the full fiscal year, and it's not. That's my mistake. Thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
I thought that we had addressed the issues of the other boards that we work with paying their, what, what are they not doing?
That, that additional overage LCS contributes to that. Everyone contributes to the premiums, but that additional overage LCS is paying for, but it's not budgeted within Laurel's budget or CBGS's budget, that being the point.
Dr. Gupta, unless you have, please, to that.
I'm just going to add, if you reflect back about three, four years ago, in the school board, we talked about that we are contributing about hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to overages of all the ancillary units we carry. Gov schools, STEM Academy, where the other districts are not contributing to that overage we are covering as a Lynchburg City School. So at that time, the board decided we'll keep continuing carrying that instead of dividing that to other districts. So let them carry the burden. So maybe that's a discussion we ought to have, saying let other districts carry equal burden of that overage, right?
All right. Madam Clerk, please so note that, as, as he stated, that's been a discussion we've had and probably need to continue. Is there anyone else on that? And we want to thank you, Ms. Kapazi, for giving us this report reflective of activity through December twenty twenty-two. I would like to advance the board through the concern agenda before we take a break. In Section H, you will see minutes from the January tenth, twenty twenty-three school board meeting, minutes from the January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three work session, and then our Human Resources Board Report, which is duly appended. Is there a motion to approve the concern agenda?
I move that we approve the concern agenda.
Is there a second to that motion? Second, a motion made by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Day, that we would approve their concern agenda. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up, remember, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Mr. Tros?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Day?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
So that everybody be ready for robust discussion under the remaining sections of our meeting tonight. If we could take a five-minute break, and then we will return and go right back to work. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We give all of our board members and clerk a chance to resettle. We are going to backpedal a little bit in my haste and give Dr. Edwards an opportunity to bring on our human resource director to share an announcement with us.
Yes, we just thought it is CTE Appreciation Month along with School Board Appreciation Month. And we did hear a lot of conversation, and we have been in a lot of conversations, about career and technical education, workforce development. You all changed our mission statement to add "and beyond" because we're really interested in kids having a successful future, not just graduate. So we did want to make mention just of a little thing that our community may not know. So I've asked Ms. Scott to talk a little bit about the newest member of our team, of our LCS team. Ms. Scott.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Good evening, board. I'm excited to announce that Mr. Dooley has joined our team, a team to lead our CTE programming. He is a visionary, experienced, and student-focused leader with a passion for career and technical education. Mr. Dooley received the twenty-twenty-two Dr. Lee Rawls Outstanding Career in Technical Education Award from Virginia Association for Trade and Industrial Education. So we're excited to have him a part of our team.
Outstanding. Nice.
He's hit the ground running already, and if I'm not mistaken, he's engaging some of our students to get a haircut on Friday, right? What way to get into CTE than just practice what you preach there? So we just wanted to make the community aware because that position had been vacant, and now with that position filled, it sort of adds a bridge between our partners in education work that we do, our "and beyond" work that we do, and just all of the initiatives that we're working with the CTE Academy at CBCC, our plans for what we want to do at the middle school. So he's going to play an integral role, and we just wanted to update the community. So thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that announcement. Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and I'm impressed that Mr. Dooley has a Master of Public Administration from James Madison University.
No deuce.
Leave that alone. All right. Section I, Comprehensive Strategic Plan, update on facilities master plan, Dr. Edwards.
Okay, yes. So each month, we pretty much try to give an update of where we are on our joint efforts with our facility study, and just to remind our public, or even our new families who weren't here last year, that we spent considerable time last year having community conversations, looking at Parts One and Two of our facility study, which was the demographics and the facilities condition assessment, which is the condition of our buildings. Part Three is the educational programming, and then the big part we're all waiting for is Part Four, which are the combination of all of those recommendations. So today, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Waterka to talk a little bit more about where we are with Part Three.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good evening, members of the board. You recall at our last meeting, we had a kind of overview of the scope of work of the educational consultant, helping us through our facilities master planning effort. As Dr. Edwards said, we had a facility assessment report, which was a very detailed assessment of the actual buildings that we have. That was what was asked for from that consultant. We're now moving into the understanding of what was to be used, or what was to be done in those buildings, as we've discussed. And what I wanted to do, and I know this is a document that you've seen before, but I don't think the public has seen the scope of work. So we provided that in the actual board docs. And so what you see is a, the community will see is a seven-task project that includes everything from project initiation, which we're finishing up now, ultimately all to an implementation plan. And right now, we are working or finishing up sort of Task One, which is project initiation, which now is including a tremendous data collection effort by city and school staff, everything from literally where the buildings are to our assessment data, to how we develop curriculum and lesson plans, pacing guides, and all sorts of things that we're providing to our educational master planning consultant. So that will be done hopefully in the next week or so. That'll be to them, and we'll move along to the environmental scan, which is Section Two of the project. And so we're continuing to make progress and making sure that we are giving the proper information. So there's a lot of just sort of technical work that's going on right now, providing detail and information on context of the data that we're providing. And then we'll next very quickly move into the community engagement components. And we anticipate the in-person community engagement process to occur sort of early to mid, excuse me, April, certainly not during spring break, but that will occur during April and have opportunities, several opportunities for members of the community to engage individually, as well as a list of a number of stakeholders, including the school board and other groups that may need to be addressed. So that's where we are right now with the project. We have a lot of data collection, a lot of technical work being done by the staff members, by the twenty or so staff members between the city and schools. In addition to probably every principal is working to gather information in the division, working to try to get that work together. So that's where we are, and certainly would take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Waterka, and questions now from the board. Dr. Brennan?
Thank you, Dr. Waterka, and thank you to the staff for bringing that work together and making that connection to the consultant. I have two comments. One is short, and one is a little bit longer. And I asked the board for their patience to help me with this. I know we have a lot ahead of us, but I think this is really an important topic. I think the short one is that the six-month mission for this, as Dr. Waterka's pointing out, is several levels. But the main statement I just want to read because I think it's so important, which is that "The purpose is to facilitate a long-term vision for the physical design and location of school buildings and their role in LCS's future. Consider opportunities for closing schools, repurposing schools, combining schools, modernizing schools, building new schools, and adjusting attendance boundaries." So we have a huge goal, a huge mission out there in front of us. And for those in the community, and particularly those on city council who may not think that we are addressing these issues of what we're doing with our schools and the things we clearly are embarking on that mission. The other one that I'd like to bring to the board for their input is that I think that it's so important, and I think we all agree, it's so important that the community not only be brought along with us on this project, but they kind of lead us. I mean, this is going to have tremendous impacts on our community, and no matter what we decide to do, whether we leave things the same, whether we close school, whether we build new schools, there's going to be a lot of controversy around this. I think appropriately so, because we are going to be impacting the future of education and the schools in our community for many years to come. As I read the work plan that MGT has, under their community engagement, which is zero-point-three, they say that they would like to develop a list of the fifteen or twenty stakeholders groups from whom input will be gathered using multiple appropriate data collection methods, which could include key stakeholder phone interviews, focus group, or web-based survey. And to me, this seems to be a little community engagement light as far as really engaging our community in what we need them to do. And we've already done a mission of trying to do this with our, the conversation in the community that we had back last year to start this process, and I think we need to do something at that level again. And also, when Dominion Seven gave us their recommendations as far as what they felt after they looked at our schools, one of their main recommendations, and I've sent you the slide that they presented to us, was that they felt we needed to have a working group to, as our next step in addressing this, that after we had met our contract with an educational consultant, that they say what our next step, and this is from March of two thousand and twenty-two, they say that we should develop a working committee. And that committee should be made up of the school board, city council, and the community, and that it should set goals and methodologies and a schedule for how this process is going to happen, and discuss the issues of consolidation, new construction, renovation, all the things that we want to do with this. And I really think that this project is the most important thing that I think we as board members are going to address perhaps during our term as board members. I mean, we are going to dictate what is going to be the vision and the future for education in our schools for years to come. And I think we need to do it in lockstep in support with the key stakeholders, who are our community, and also with our partner, which is city council. I mean, we know that they own the buildings, we do the education. You know, whatever we decide is going to have to go to them in order for them to agree and participate. And I think the sooner we get them on board, the more important it is. So I really think that they give this whole mission, and I'd like us to consider whether we should actually have an advisory committee to the school board, which we can do under a policy for advisory committees, an ad hoc group, which is a temporary group, that would be a committee that represents school board with school board members, city council with city council members, community members, particularly representatives of the schools that will be impacted by these decisions, and other entities that either the board or city council or the consultant feels are important to be part of that. And that this group work with LCS and with city council as a joint group to come back to us with their recommendations. So an advisory committee to the school board that's a temporary ad hoc group to help us address this and help us be sure that we have an open door to our community, that they have input, they know what we're doing, and where this road is leading. So when we ultimately do get to the end of it, there are, there are few surprises as we can have. So I would like to put that to the board for their discussion. I'm willing to make a motion if we need to do that in order to get it as a strong discussion, but whatever the board would like to do. But I really think this is important, and we should make sure it happens now and not as we get farther down the line.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Brennan. I hear you toying with the notion of a motion, but you want to hear a discussion around an advisory committee to the school board. And I know that there are a lot of board members that probably have thoughts about that. And so we are in discussion around Dr. Waterka's report and Dr. Brennan's reflections that he has just stated. What members, what are your thoughts? Dr. Carter?
I think, isn't that the reason why we went with this consulting firm? Was for them to take the lead? And I saw another document, I can't pull it up now, where there are different, there's a city council group and a Lynch, oh, my day, and the school board group that's comprised of different members to work with, in conjunction with MGTs. Because if not, then we should have just kept what we had before, which was the, I forgot the name of it.
Task Force?
Yeah, the task force. Then we'll be going right back to that. But I, we can always amp up or increase, or I think, more community input versus starting over, because we're right here now. We might as well continue with, I mean, we're paying money for this group, aren't we? Yeah, to do this. And it's on a step-by-step process where it's going to really look at everything, and they're going to bring in community input. And we can, if we want, I guess we can ask that they will increase more individuals to talk about the various aspects of stakeholders.
Dr. Gupta?
We hired a consultant to help us out. And the superintendent gave part of our leadership team. City gave part of their leadership team to work with that consultant to come up with recommendations for the school board. So going with a, the committee you're suggesting tells me that I'm telling them, I don't trust your judgment. I don't trust your ability to conduct those community feedback in the right way. So you need a big daddy watching you and doing what you're doing. So I need to, I think we need to leave it to them. They're all professionals. They know how to do their job. They have been in the public arena. And let them come back with the feedback. Nothing's stopping a school board member to show up at that meeting and listen to what is going on. When community meetings happened last time, most of us, majority of us, were there. We were part of that discussion. So what will this additional committee do at this point in time, and we are in February? You know, things are, Dr. Waterka, things are moving forward, right? The train has left the station.
Would it not be better, though, if we had representatives from different entities in our community so that there were various stakeholders whose voices could be heard? Because we're all school board members, which means we have at least some things, some things in common. But we have, and I say this from my own, from my own experience, from being in a classroom and being an administrator and that sort of thing. But there are, all communities do not think alike, if you will. And so if we don't have representatives from various communities, we need to have the diversity of those voices. We need to have people that come from this community and that community. We need to have men, and we need to have women. We need to have parents, and we need to have people that don't have children. We need to have people that have students, perhaps that have graduated, and parents of students who are young. So we can get all of those voices in the room together and compare notes so that we can hear what everybody, what everybody thinks about whatever our ideas are.
I agree with you. I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I tend to agree with Dr. Brennan and Ms. Preston. I mean, it's no different than a school calendar. Yes, we're paying this consultant group to work out these details. But it's also, it's also important to get feedback from community members, especially if we're considering closing their school. That's a culture that they've been used to, accustomed to for many, many years. So just having the community engaged early on, getting their feedback, I think is just paramount. I think we would be doing ourselves a disservice, not allowing more people to be engaged in the conversation.
You still have the floor, Dr. Gupta.
And I'm not saying community involvement is not important. What I'm saying is, when we do these subgroups, these subgroups are skewed towards, the squeaking wheel makes more noise. Those students, many of them don't have voice in the system, and they're still left out. So what control measures we have in place or will have in place so that the voices, as you said, for everyone is heard, you know, not the few? Because, and it's very important, because most of the schools I see on the block are all on District Two. And I've said that in the forums before. So District Two becomes very important from the school board representation to have a voice in their process and the community on that Camper Avenue from Campbell Avenue down all the way up to Oakley becomes very important. I'm not saying their voice is not important. What I'm saying is, that voice can be, who will collect that voice is the point I was making. You got a team there right now to collect and do the job along with the consultant. So now we're putting a team on top of a team to, for an oversight, or do things they will miss.
If I could just.
Please, Dr. Waterka.
So one thing I just want to say is, I would encourage the board not to be too tied to the recommendations that the previous consultant chose to make, right? And whether or not you want another working group, that's a decision for you. But I think particularly there was some, there was some, there was some perspective that maybe that consultant thought about what the community wanted to see in some of those building assessments. And I would encourage you, and part of the reason we chose to go with another consultant that's not located in Lynchburg is to have an objective, unbiased analysis of that, right? That doesn't mean that we don't include as many voices as we possibly can. We can always add more voices to the table. We can always add more voices to the, to the table. I think all the folks that we mentioned are probably listed here in our stakeholder analysis, our stakeholder, stakeholder list. So, certainly, you know, if you feel like that's the appropriate step, that's, that's certainly, we can make, we can make that work, we'll work through that. But I, I would just encourage you not to think that it's a very light engagement process. I don't, I don't think that's the case. I mean, we can agree to disagree on that. I think there's a very robust engagement process, and I, and it, it is sincere that we want to have as many people at the table as we possibly can. I think when we discussed this before, one of the things that sort of came out was that we wanted to make sure that there was equal opportunity for members of the board to give input as well. So, I think, I just want to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Waterco. And I, I see hands up, and of course, this is a very interesting discussion and the perspectives, and we could be on this forever, just on this issue tonight. So, you all, please forgive me if I try to narrow us in into the report that's been given for the comprehensive strategic plan for this February meeting. And within the context of that, Dr. Brennan has argued that he characterized it as engagement light, and has given some considerations. I've heard feedback already. Dr. Carter used the language "amp up." And so, I guess we're really trying to figure out whether it's necessary to create a working group, or whether we would be comfortable with letting this group amp up what they're doing. Dr. Edwards, if you want to weigh in, and then I do want to recognize Dr. Senha and Dr. Brennan.
I just want to make sure all the members of the board are, are kind of still committed to doing what we did before. So, after we had a group that kind of came in, and then we did some tours of buildings, and then we contracted with Dominion Seven, and they did some work, and they came in and interviewed and talked and did a report. Once they gave us that report, we spent the next six weeks out in the community saying, here is the report, here are the possibilities, here's what they said about the various buildings. We shared it with communities. If you remember, we actually went on tour and picked buildings that were in each ward, district, as well as the ones that had potential for, what is it, either renovation. We did one at Sandusky, because obviously, that was a school that, is a school that we were thinking about would be replaced with a new school, but also at buildings that may need major renovations. Our plan with this, and remember, we were like, all right, let's get that. Now, we've got a good picture of the infrastructure, let's look at the programming. They're probably going to come back with some recommendations that we got to go back out to the community and do the exact same thing again, and engage the community, even though they are going to do focus groups in those areas, so that we do get those various folks, do exactly what we did before. But ultimately, after all of that work, two consultants, probably ten community conversations, or I don't know what, we did six or 12, comes back to the board for a final, like, this is what we want to do. So, I just didn't want the board to miss that we plan on taking all this work, once we get the big picture from MGT, we'll go back into our community and make sure that, okay, here we go, we have another meeting here, another meeting, we have one at your, your church, any church, or any place or community center that will have it. But I, I want to make sure that you know that that is also part of what we did with the first consultant on the physical part of the building, and it's what we're going to do with the second consultant on the educational part of it.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Dr. Senha, and then Dr. Brennan.
I'm not clear on, on your perception, and you can help me understand, that it's like, because under the community engagement, it says fifteen to twenty stakeholder groups that it will seek feedback from. So, to me, that's a lot of people. And then later, it talks about fifteen to twenty stakeholder phone interviews, that's a, that's a narrower set. But to me, it seems fairly robust of these types of groups, and it's not limited to this list of suggested types of groups. There can be others in there. And as far as, like, a steering committee or whatever to, to guide this or oversee it, that's school board and city council, wouldn't it be? So, unless I'm missing something, I, I'm, I'm not seeing where your concern is coming from.
Great. Well, thank you for stating that, and if I can...
Please. It was yours, Dr. Brennan.
First of all, I am totally open to the will of the board, whatever it like to do. I just want to raise the topic, because I think this is such an important project for us. And just responding to some of the comments, I am all in favor of the group that's been hired. I think their statement is good, I think they've been vetted properly, I think that's all in good shape. You know, the community conversations that we had, we, we did try very hard to do those, and the turnout was not very good. There wasn't really a conclusion to it, we never really wrapped it up, but we made the effort. And I think it was, you know, we get credit for doing that. But as far as there were individual meetings, they were not that well-attended, and there was never taking all those comments together and presenting those in some format to the community. So, just as, as one method that we've done. As I said, I think that whatever comes of this project is going to be controversial, and I think the more that we get it out to the public, the better it's going to be. We had a meeting with leadership of the city on Friday, and I think it's, it's pretty clear that there's not been any communication to city council about this process so far. As far as the group being hired, how it was vetted, whatever it was, there's not been a report to them, which is not encouraging to me. I mean, we've, we've hired a group, we've committed to a group, we need to make sure we're partners with the city in order to do that, that I really want to make sure that we, we do this the proper way. So, so my vision is not to, not to slow things down, because I think on their schedule, we have time, they're going to collect a lot of data for the next month or two. But the issue is, should we have a group of people that I envision being ten to 12, that consist of a couple of school board members, a couple of city council members, administrators represented from the schools, whoever else leads me on it, that they can help vet these ideas and help the community come along with us? So, that when all is said and done, and we stand up there before city council and say, this is what we think needs to be done, that it's not a surprise to anyone, and people feel like they've had the opportunity to have input. So, that's all. And I think if, if this group will do that, and the, and the school board's comfortable with it doing it, I have no problem with it. But I do think this is major, and I think the more we cooperate with the community, the more I think we let them lead us. You know, this is their future, this is what they're going to have.
Dr. Day, and then, thank you, Dr. Brennan. Dr. Day, and then Dr. Waterco.
So, I don't think what Dr. Brennan is suggesting is that radical compared to what's here. This, I think the difference is, this list of fifteen to 20 key stakeholders, are they going to function in a reactive way or a proactive way? As it's written here, it sounds like they're going to get phone calls, they're going to get surveys, they're going to be contacted individually, feedback to the, to the consultant group, as opposed to getting together and tell that group, here's what we need to see. I think that's the, that's what I'm hearing, from what Dr. Brennan is suggesting, and I think that's important. It's not clear from this that those fifteen, 20 to 20 people will ever see each other. It looks to me like they're just going to be on the receiving end of emails and phone calls. And I think it is important for them to get together and say, well, how did you answer that question? Oh, I didn't think about it that way. I think those folks need to get together and hear each other. I think it's important for the city council participants in this group to hear what we, our, our representatives of the school board have to say, to hear what's coming from the teachers. If this group is going to be the most influential single collection of individuals for this process, I think they need to hear from each other as well. And so, I'm hearing what Dr. Brennan is suggesting, is that this group needs to be together and have a little bit of agency of its own in this process, rather than just reacting to questions that come to it from the consultant group.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Dr. Waterco, you wanted to say?
So, I also just want to make sure we point out task number five, which is the community feedback component, which is, when the technical work is done, where we can, we can develop a number of potential scenarios, that's, that's another time when we engage the community and hear from their perspective on, on what those potential scenarios are, which could be, none of these things are the things that we want to do, right? And it says, we kind of go back to the drawing board. And, you know, I guess just in my experience, it's oftentimes very important to have something to react to as well. So, certainly, I agree that having something on the front end to proactively say what you need to, I think that's, that's critically important. But it's also very important, I think, to have an opportunity to react to a series of potential recommendations that I think will be valuable. So, I think that, I don't want to overlook that component.
So, so, so if I might, and I think Dr. Brennan has presented this in the spirit of good taste, of trying to figure out, how do we maximize engagement? And so, I clearly hear what he's saying, and others who have somewhat supported that, and I'm not necessarily against it. I do hear Dr. Gupta use this language, who will collect the voices? And at least for me, I'm a little concerned about that, because I think I hear the superintendent saying that within the plan, as has been in the past, and we can always get better at it, I guess, some of them were nicely attended, I thought. But at any rate, I, I haven't been through everything we've gone through, I'm a little, little concerned, not that I'm a power-tripping person or who's controlling it, I just think the way it's presented now, we are able to collect the voices. And I would probably feel better if we amped up that to whatever degree we need it to, because I'm a little concerned of what that looks like when other folk get involved in it. And that's just my personal thoughts on the matter. Dr. Gupta, you want to say something else?
So, we got a new leadership in the city. I'm surprised to hear that they don't know what is going on, because as per superintendent, half of the work group is LCS employees, the other half are city managers' representatives. So, are they out of touch? Or they are not communicating with their bosses what is going on in this group? Then that's their problem.
Right.
You see what I'm saying? And so, we don't, we cannot blame Dr. Waterco and his team for that, and say, okay, I need somebody to watch you, because you're not doing your work. Half of the group is city employees, and their responsibility is to tell their bosses what they're doing, just like he may be doing it to the superintendent.
So, Mr. Truss, go right here.
I actually didn't take Dr. Brennan's, I didn't take it in that theme. I think his overarching point is, this is such a critical decision, and it makes such a lasting impact, that we wanted to make sure we had the buy-in all along. And I see, and I could see how two forums was it, I saw in here. I want to make sure that we do get that buy-in. I think you've got the framework for it. Certainly, I don't want to necessarily create another task for it or worse or what have you. But we need to have that buy-in along the way. So, again, there's no surprise, when the final package is all presented, people should be knowing, you should have an idea what's happening. And I, I will say, we worked hard at getting the community relations groups together, and I did not make it to all of them, I made it to the majority of those, and I was a tad disappointed that we didn't have more community members. That's not necessarily on us, it was well-communicated, but I would have, we had a lot of staff there. And I mean, that's, I mean, you can't lead them, you can't get, drag people into the meetings if they want to come in, but I want to make sure they have the opportunity to. So, especially if we're going to be closing a school in their neighborhood or what have you, I want to hear from them. I get the, I get the vein of what you're saying, and I agree with the vein. Of course, I don't necessarily want to create another layer of bureaucracy, but I just want to make sure that we are aware of getting that community input.
Anyone else who would like to make a comment before, I'm going to ask Dr. Brennan whether or not he is toward with this notion enough to either make a motion, or we'll move on to the next item on our agenda.
Do we have a specific timeframe in which this is to be accomplished?
The, the project, or?
Mm-hmm. The whole, yeah.
So, Dr. Waterco can come on. So, we're, we're in the second month of six months, well, into the first month of six months, so, the summertime.
Because would it, would it make sense for us to design a calendar, if you will, a schedule, to, to get certain steps taken, taken care of? Because the, the input that I'm going to give at an elementary school is not necessarily the same input that I'm going to get at a, at a high school. And so, if there was a timeframe designed so that high schools would either meet separately or all high schools together and answer the same questions, whatever those questions happen to be, and then, once that's, once that's done, then that group puts the in, their input together and presents it together to the, you know, to the larger group, who would then assess it and figure out, okay, these are the three things that high school thinks have to be done, and these are the two that middle school says are critical, and these are the, you know, four that elementary says are critical. Because then you're getting input from all of the stakeholders, number one, and I think that's critical. And, and because you got kind of an organized process, because if you have the same questions for each group, it's going to lead people to talk about the same things instead of everybody going off in, in left field. Would that make sense, to design some kind of project or process like that, that would lead us in a particular direction?
It could be, he can develop a calendar for us, and they'll take care of it.
Or maybe they already have a calendar.
And they may, yeah.
Share the calendar with us.
My limited experience, and I will qualify it that way, is that people will come and deal with things when they kind of know what the options are. Sometimes people don't do very well otherwise, and then you, you got to know how to get the people there. Dr. Brennan, it's in your hands, I, I just, I, I think what you have brought to us tonight has challenged us to make sure that this is done right. And if, in fact, that can be done through what we have, amped up or whatever we need to do, then that's one thing. But if, if we want to go to working group option, the chair certainly is not going to not entertain a motion, if there is one.
So, Dr. Coleman, thank you. You know, I, as, as I said before, I'm willing to do the will of the board totally, but I do think this is a big project. I think this is the legacy of this school board, what comes of this, and I think we need to do it as best we can and, and in the smartest way that we can. So, I would like to make a motion under policy BCFZ Advisory Committee to the School Board, where the school board may appoint advisory councils or committees of citizens of the school division for consultation with reference to specific matters pertaining to local schools, that this would be a specific committee just looking at this facility, working with LCS administration and, and city council, not making decisions, but bringing recommendations back to us. There is an advisory board to the board. So, I would like to make that motion that we, that we do initiate an advisory committee to the board to deal with the facility project.
And that last part you just said, that would entertain that as a motion, because the other part, I think, because we got to be clear on what we're doing. Is there a second? And if you could restate as the maker of the motion, the motion, one more time, then I'll see if there's a second to that motion.
Okay. So, I would make a motion that the school board approve an advisory, advisory committee to the board that would not be a decision-making body, but would make recommendations of the board for the board's review and final decision regarding the facility's master plan for the future of Lynchburg City Schools.
A second. Okay. Mr. Andrews has seconded the motion, so now we can have any additional discussion on the motion. Dr. Senha.
I would like to fully consider what your motion is proposing, and I don't feel like right now I have the full breadth, like, the scope of what this would do. I think where we ran into trouble with the task force is not fully understanding or comprehending what the scope of their objectives were. There were concerns of mission creep. And so, I would feel more comfortable voting for this if there were time to consider just what that scope is. So, sort of like we have a first reading of something, and then we come back and take action on it. I don't...
Yeah.
You're winning me over, I want to say that.
It's charming.
So, but, but...
The details are...
The details are, I don't feel, without the, the finer details of what, how that would work, and, and, you know, sort of putting guardrails around it, so it doesn't get out of hand, and it doesn't infringe upon the real responsibilities of council, that we could see something and then, and then vote on it.
I'll yield to the maker of the motion before Dr. Day speaks.
So, I, I think that's a great suggestion, and I do not want to burden the board down at this point with this meeting, but I do think it's important. So, I would be willing, if it's okay, Mr. Andrews, who seconded that motion, to withdraw it and, and work on it with the administration and with the consulting group, to say, you know, what would be beneficial, and bring it back to the board for their consideration with more details.
The maker of the motion is willing to withdraw the motion. Dr. Day?
Well, I was going to offer an alternate approach, which is just to postpone action on that motion until a future meeting. But it's your motion, so I will yield to you. I'd love to go back with more details, work with that. So I think if it's okay, let me put some meat on it, with working with the administration, getting some feedback from the consulting group. So you're withdrawing your motion? Withdrawing it, to flush it out. To flush it out, and to bring it back at wherever the next appropriate time would be.
And just before you withdraw, in discussion of the motion, if I may, Anthony, did you want to speak first? Some of the things I'm interested in is, you know, obviously the composition of this committee, the, you know, how would they be appointed, or how would they be put in the selected committee?
Right.
Obviously, the scope, some of the deliverables of the committee, which is exactly, those are the kind of things I'm interested in personally, have seen, and I'm sure other people may chime in with that.
Good.
All right, as I'm looking at the rules, as I have them in front of me, if you're going to make a motion to postpone, the motion must state the time in which the matter is to be considered. And so you would have to tell us, if you're talking about.
Administration.
Good. So I just still want to make the record clear. So if we've withdrawn, then we are back to the report having been presented. And Dr. Brennan, or any of the nine board members can certainly do your investigation around this matter. I do also want to state that I feel confident, and in light of what you brought tonight, Dr. Brennan, that Dr. Edwards has stated that there is going to be ongoing opportunities for the group to share with the community. And if we beef that up, that might take care of it. It is very important, and student achievement, and all these other issues that you all are doing, working on all these groups, doing a great job, has to go forward. So, Dr. Brennan, thank you for withdrawing, and we'll hear back at a later time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, fellow board members.
Appreciate you, sir. All right, thank you all for that. We're working well together. And I'm going to move us now, get my thoughts together, but now into section J, how about that, is 743. Unfinished business, number one, hazard communications. Dr. Edwards for Dr. Ward.
Yep, turning it right over to Dr. Ward.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. And again, this hazard communication procedures, which is EBAZ-R, was brought to you on January 24th in the work session. There were two questions or comments. The first is listed in the board docs document, and it says essentially, why are art materials specifically addressed in the policy but not others? And the answer to that is that art materials are specifically addressed in the VDOE standards, and have to be addressed for younger children, which I'm glad is a better answer than we've always done that. Thankful for that. There was also a rewording, let me pull it up real quickly, to try to just clarify, a section about emptying containers, I think. It's on page two of six, and under number three, product label is the last paragraph. And essentially, we changed this to say, hopefully to make it more clear, I'm just saying that the only time a container does not need to have a label is when it has been entirely emptied. So hopefully that's addresses it.
Thank you, Dr. Day, for your statement. So this is our second reading, it's before the board for action tonight. What is the pleasure of the board?
The move that we approve the following school board policy, EBAZ.
Been moved by Dr. Carter, is it second? Second by Dr. Day. Any further questions or discussion on the motion stated? Dr. Gupta?
Just under program elements, you got Roman one, and then three, I'm assuming chemical inventories is number two.
I'm sorry, show me.
Under program elements, I don't know which page it is.
Okay.
You skipped Roman numeral two.
Oh, it's indented there.
Oh, it's indented.
I think it's just because of the formatting, so hazard chemical inventories is number two.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta, for your consideration. Anybody else? All right, hearing no further discussion, Dr. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. School board member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That now moves us to J2. And before Dr. Edwards brings on Mrs. Pugh for the discussion on instructional resources, I do want to thank each of you, I want to thank our vice chair. The mayor of our city does not need any lecture from us around whose responsibility it is to govern. The mayor is very clear, the vice mayor is very clear. And I would embrace that many of the members of council understand that. So tonight, what we're simply trying to do is to garner trust, confidence in our school division, that we have capable persons who appreciate at the highest level the engagement of parents, while we seek to manage the school division. And so Dr. Edwards is going to tee this up for us. You have a letter attached coming from the mayor and members of council regarding this matter. We want to work together, we want to run a good school division, and make sure that our parents understand that we are listening to them as we seek to do that. Dr. Edwards?
So, part of what we wanted to do is just, one, remind our public that this was something that the board did approve. But we put all of the approved policies, as well as a few others, because sometimes we get questions about family life. And the one that we didn't share last time, because it wasn't up for approval, was, is public complaints about learning resources. And I think you heard tonight from several staff members who kind of outlined that process of what it looks like in a classroom, when teachers are working directly with family members. But also, what happens if it has to go above that and escalate, which is where our public policies come into play. So we did bring them, put them all back on the agenda, more so that the public could see everything, and also just to have Ms. Pugh give an update on the process. I think the last time we talked about some of the stuff that we were doing to post resources. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Pugh.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good evening, school board. So, as you heard, as Dr. Edwards said, you heard from some of our staff members, especially Aaron Reed. He walked you through that process very well. So, we do have processes in place. Our material selection process is spelled out, teachers know what to do. When we made some of the updates, that was to include things that came from Senate bill, such as sexually explicit material. But we have had a policy in place for material selection, material review. As Dr. Edwards said, we also have had policy KLB, public complaints about learning resources, that has been in play for a very long time. And to my knowledge, since I've been in this position, we have not received many of those formal complaints. We have worked, as I said last meeting, we have worked with families who have had concerns about learning material, learning resources. Might not have been for sexually explicit content, but it might have been for a different reason. So we have processes in place to address that. I will give you some updates on IIA-RZ, because that is new for us, that's our regulation. And that is new for us. And we have begun, at the school level, and at the division level, working, looking at resources, reviewing the current resources that we have, specifically looking for sexually explicit content as defined by policy IIA. When we are putting in place a means for teachers, and I'm hoping it's just at the secondary level, I don't believe we have any content with sexually explicit, excuse me, any material with sexually explicit content at the elementary level, but those teachers will also be reviewing their materials. But we are putting in place a means where those teachers, when they find something that's either questionable, or that they believe matches that definition, in our policy, they will submit the name of the book, the author, the publisher, the ISBN number, the content that they feel is in question, the grade level, and the subject matter in which it's taught. We will then put those by school, make those available by school on the school websites. We will also put a comprehensive list together on the division website. So, community members, parents, concerned parents can also go there to find them. As of today, the instructional materials page on the curriculum and instruction part of the website has been created. It does have some language describing, going over the policy, going over some of the things that we're implementing. And I am working with others to get that list started for the division level. I do have some resources currently from the high school, some that are being used in some of our Virtual Virginia courses. So we are diligently working on reviewing all of our current materials for sexually explicit content, and we will make those titles available to our parents. Again, we just encourage our families, if you have questions about any learning material, please reach out to the teacher and/or the school principal. We ask that you start with the teacher first. But we want to have those conversations, as you heard from three teachers tonight, especially the two English teachers at the high school level, they have built relationships with their parents. They do communicate what those learning resources and materials are going to be for the year. And we do encourage and foster that open relationship and communication with our families.
All right, thank you, Deputy Superintendent Pugh, for sharing that, and all of the persons who shared tonight's public comments. The floor is open at this time for board members to have a discussion around this matter. All of you are obviously sensitive to the fact that the attached letter from council, though it is the first that I've seen of its nature in the now almost nine years I've been on the school board, I think the intent was to notify the board of parents who had concerns. And we are concerned about parents who have concerns. At the same time, it's our responsibility to educate all of our parents of how we go about making sure that their concerns are addressed. And so our January vote on that policy was reflective of that understanding from our side. And now that has been given to the public for additional information around it. And so tonight, I'm interested in conversation around what you think about this matter, and obviously, if any board member is interested in reconsidering, you can state that. All right, who had to hand up first? Let's just start, let's start on this side. Dr. Day, and then we'll work our way around.
I have spent a lot of time listening to the comments that were given this evening. Numerous people have emailed me, I'm sure we've all received 50 to 100 emails about this. And so I want to explain to you what my opinions about this are, and I will ask your indulgence, because it'll take me a couple minutes.
Take your time.
There is a wide range of convictions about sexuality in our community, and it is not the place of the school district to attempt to influence those convictions, much less to enact policies which marginalize those who hold one set of convictions as opposed to another. I do recognize that there are times when we, the school district, cannot fully accommodate the entire range of convictions held, and we must try to steer a middle course which accommodates as many of our constituents as we can. The policies under consideration here, principally IIA-BRZ, as currently adopted, use what we're referring to as an opt-out approach. But regardless of any opt-in or opt-out preference, it does provide that parents will be notified in advance of the use of any sexually explicit materials in their students' instruction, and given the opportunity to review the materials, and if they so request, to have their child use alternate materials. And as worded, the current policy does not make that request subject to school division approval. There are parents at all points on the spectrum of convictions who will pay close attention to those announcements about sexually explicit materials, and take whatever action is appropriate to ensure that their students use those materials which best accord with their convictions. The parents for whom opt-in versus opt-out makes a difference are those who either fail to receive the announcement, do not adequately consider the advance notice they received, or for whatever reason fail to make the request consistent with their convictions. It is those parents who are going to be affected by a decision of opt-in versus opt-out. And so I'm speaking specifically about those parents, you might call them the non-responsive parents. Under opt-out, the concern is that students of those parents would be exposed to sexually explicit depictions which their parents would not have wanted. While under opt-in, the concern is that students of those parents would not have access to the explicit materials that their parents would have approved. So which is the most dangerous of those potential harms? I judge the former to be the more serious harm. Once seen and disturbed by depictions, we cannot remove those mental images from a student's mind. But if a student does not see the materials due to failure to opt-in, those materials can always be provided after the fact, in private sessions, or even at home with their parents. In promoting our public schools, I've often heard statements to the effect, why would someone choose a private school when there are so many opportunities available in LCS? But many people do make the choice of a private or homeschool, and there are reasons that they do. Principal among them are concerns about attitudes towards sexuality, religious faith, perspectives on our history, which will be taught to their children. To many families, those issues are more important than the unique opportunities that LCS provides. I think we sometimes ignore the importance of those concerns to many families, and then we are bewildered when they choose non-public school options at considerable expense to themselves. In my mind, that's the most important aspect of the issue before us tonight. I am not aware that there has been inappropriate materials, that inappropriate materials have been a problem in our schools so far, nor do I see a preference for opt-in as an expression of distrust of the teachers who select those materials for their students. Rather, it's a recognition that different families have different standards and convictions, and that no single choice of materials may be acceptable to all. Perhaps it is not actually a problem here at present, but I think that some are concerned that the problems that have erupted elsewhere could emerge here. So I believe we should respect that concern, and the request from city council that we address it. So in conclusion, I support making changes to our policies to use an opt-in rather than opt-out approach, if for no other reason than as a gesture to those in our community who are sensitive to these things, showing that LCS does respect their concerns, regardless of whether we think their concerns are justified or not. So, Mr. Chairman, I formally move that we declare that the relevant policies on sexually explicit materials be revised to an opt-in approach, and we direct the staff to develop and propose to the board detailed changes to our policies pursuant to my preceding sentence. If the board approves my motion, I will do whatever I can to assist in designing detailed changes to our policies.
Right, there's a motion that is being made by Dr. Day, that the board would instruct administration to look into the feasibility of language change and come back at some point. Am I understanding your motion correctly? Is there a second to that motion?
I second that motion.
All right, there is a second to the motion. So now we're on discussion tonight in relationship to the motion itself. So the approved policy stands according to this motion, but this would instruct some investigation around a preference to use opt-in versus opt-out. And that has been seconded, so we're in discussion. Dr. Gupta, what would you like to say?
You know, when we voted last time, I thought opt-out was better. But as I listen to people, and I think the neighborhood I live in nowadays, parents are not involved in the kid's life. So they are left out. To me, they will get it by default, because nobody is signing up for them, that waiver for opt-out, or nobody shows up, or grandma is working 18 hours a day to put meals on the table. So as I was listening to all this political drama, and I was thinking about these kids, man, these kids are the ones who need a sort of an opt-in waiver for them, so they are not left for the system to decide for them. At least they will not get something which their At least they will not get something which their mommy and daddy may not want them to have, but they are not involved in their lives right now.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Dr. Sina.
Well, that's where non-involvement becomes an issue, because if you're waiting for opt-in and you're not getting a response from a parent, what do you do? Do you hold up the curriculum? Do you exclude those students because their parents haven't paid attention and followed through? So if we have an opt-in policy, we need to set some parameters or some kind of guard rail so that it's not going to hold up progress. We expect our teachers to cover a lot of material in the time they have. So there has to be some kind of thing where by default you opt-in if you don't respond. I mean, I don't know how you handle that, but that's a real issue. We can't hold up the curriculum for people who are not involved. Secondly, part of this really upsets me because a lot of the discussion is framed using the definition of what is considered sexually explicit, as if we are already using material that fit that definition. It's an implied accusation that our schools are subjecting our children to these kinds of things. To my knowledge, I don't think that's the case. So that's where I find fault in the way this has been presented to us for consideration. I do struggle with the opt-in because we do know that the majority of parents, had to say, don't pay attention. They're not reading their kids' folders. They're not looking at what's going on. And how do we accommodate, how do we make that work without holding up everything? And as we heard from one of our commenters today, who showed that the permission slip for the play is a perfect example of opt-in, yet that's not sufficient. They want the whole thing removed, no filter. What, do you want opt-in, or do you want to just get rid of it? So that's where I find fault with some of this option, too. It's more than just an opt-in. It's trying to tell the schools how to do education. And let me remind everybody, as I did in the past, our teachers have to adhere to VDOE recommendations. These teachers are part of our community. They share our sensibilities. They represent the diversity of opinions and levels of tolerance for types of material. They know the students that they teach probably better than any of us do, because they're there in the classroom with them. Okay? So do you really think they're going to impose on our students and their families material that is, that fits this definition, which is being implied? That's the accusation I'm hearing. I don't think that's the case. So while I understand the opt-in, and I'm, 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 I don't know what the word is, I'm appreciative of what that means. It creates a whole host of problems that I can see in terms of the burden on the teacher, how it holds up curriculum, and what do you do in the cases of parents who don't respond, don't, don't, don't make their wishes known.
Got you, Dr. Sina. We can come back if necessary to you. Mr. Tross.
Originally, I, yeah, said, how could we do the opt-in? I thought it would be just a tremendous burden, logistically and what have you. But along with Dr. Sina's point, I had to step back and say, wait a minute, what is the scope of the issue we're really dealing with here? It is so, the teachers are not, you know, probably typically putting this kind of material out there. So the scope is really a very narrow scope. So I don't take it as an accusation. I take it as a safeguard that I would, there are many classes will never have an opt-in notice go out. How often, I just don't think that's going to be a very frequent occurrence, because I agree, I put a lot of confidence in our instructors, our teachers. They're not going to be doing this kind of language. So it's a safeguard that I, I don't even know, you know, once a year maybe? I just don't think the scope of the issue is as broad as, certainly as broad as I thought it was originally, because I was like, how in the world would logistically we do it? I'm not concerned about opt-in because I just think it's not going to happen that frequently. And if there is some material that is by our definition sexually explicit, I think it's going to be a rare occasion, if there is any, and you have the opt-in process. I just, I think for myself, I had to remind myself that the scope is very narrow. I don't think it is a big, broad endemic problem that we're going to be having opt-in messages going out to our parents once a week or what have you. I could see it rare, if ever, happening, and we have that there. And as Dr. Day put it very eloquently and thoughtfully, if we don't address certain concerns of certain parents, and if it's a legitimate concern that they have, I think it may be overstated, but it's a legitimate concern, let's address it. I don't think there's a lot of overhead in doing it. Certainly, Aaron Reed is a stellar instructor in terms of he is out there engaging with the parents. I can't say that I know that all teachers are doing that, but I just don't think the scope of the issue is as broad, certainly as I thought it was at one point. And because it's such a narrow scope, I think I don't have a problem with the opt-in at this point.
Thank you. If I could ask administration two questions. Number one, the Department of Education and/or the governor's office, did that language come to us as opt-out?
There is no language in here about opting out.
Opting out. It doesn't, those words are not used in this policy. Our procedure has notification as we have, as I mentioned before, as we have in the past. And we have, you know, in the regulation, opportunities for parents to be notified, opportunities for parents to review the lists ahead of time on the website of the school and the division, opportunities for, you know, they have access to that. And then opportunities in our policy, if they really are opposed to it, the review of instructional material, the opposition, that policy, KLB, Public Complaints About Learning Resources. So to your, to answer your question, Dr. Coleman, there's nothing in here that says opt-in or opt-out. It is a policy about reviewing instructional materials, which includes all instructional materials, our textbooks, which we have a policy for that, our novels that we read at the middle school and high school level, any supplemental materials like videos or posters, pictures, images, those types of things. They all must be reviewed. We have a process in place for that. And as you heard Aaron Reed say today, when they are wanting to propose a new novel, it's not just the teacher that gets to say, this novel gets on the list. They have students read it, they have parents read it, they have other teachers read it, and they come together and they talk about it, and they make that decision. And then it comes to the curriculum and instruction department to look at that information and then make the final decision of, yes, that's going to be on our supplementary list.
Okay.
We've always had this in place. The addition is just coming from Senate Bill 656 about adding, looking for sexually explicit content. And I, to your point, if I may, you know, I hope that our list is not exhaustive, but I think you would be surprised what titles might come on that list. To Kill a Mockingbird might be on that list. Some others, some that, and I don't know if these are on our list, but The Joy Luck Club, The Kite Runner, just, these are just a few titles. So we don't think of those as having sexually explicit content, but in this interpretation, they might. So I don't want to hold my breath and say we don't have many, because I don't, I don't know yet. We are in the process of reviewing those.
Wonderful. And might I add, internal instructional resources, boots on the ground, how does this play out philosophically and practically as a school division up to this point? With the instructional resources, in order for a kid to receive instruction or whatever it is in the classroom, would they have to have a parent, right now, they get that information? And if we go to an opt-in, would that mean procedurally for us that a kid would not be able to get any instruction until some alternative material was provided that was suitable? Or does it mean that that person, if they don't get a form turned in, they just, they won't be participating? Or the teacher has to go through all of this additional work to make it happen? I'm just trying to understand as it goes across the division. Yeah, if you can.
So since, as Ms. Pugh said, that the intent was really to facilitate conversation, notification, and a procedure for parents to just say, this is what I wish for my kids, not necessarily to dictate opt-in, opt-out way. Our current practice has been, here are the instructional resources. You heard Mr. Reed say, this is where we give the syllabus. If you're on any of the class dojos and all the other things the elementary send out, there's often, here's what we're reading this week, and this is what we're doing, and the various tools that elementary schools, principals, and teachers use to communicate with parents, always letting them know, this is what the resource is, what we're using, what we're studying, the resources, what they, what they are. A lot of it is at the beginning of the year, some of it is ongoing as we shift and do that. But our practice and process, which is tied into this policy with the sexually explicit being an arm of it, has been, this is how we handle conflict or questions or concerns about it. Now, I get that we see that the scope of this is small, to sexually explicit content, and I understand what you're saying, but combine that to a practice where, okay, right now as a parent, if I don't want my child to read anything about, I'm just going to make it up, aliens, right, and we don't subscribe to that in my house, I could talk to my teacher and say that, right? But if I want to now make that process similar, well, why, why do you send home this, and they get to opt-in, and why am I now under a different process? I don't like aliens, I get this other piece, but why, why do I now have to contact you? Why aren't you contacting me, asking me if I want to? The way that our process, and I think that's what we were trying to share last time, what our processes were, and just all of our procedures and policies, and where any parent now could make a case for changing the entire process, or why is the process one way for one thing and a different way for any other thing? Where nowhere does it say it has to be opt-out or opt-in.
So we would be clowning the issue if we were to put in opt-in and then create a culture and climate, or culture at least, where you wouldn't get the instruction unless the parent turned in a form to opt-in to receive that instruction. Is that correct or not?
That's a possibility.
That's not what I heard Aaron Reed say.
But they would, they would, they certainly would, I think you're going to have more students, because there, I think if you have to wait till you receive those forms turned back in, then it will pause moving on to, potentially, moving on, you have 30 days, but in some cases, some parents don't turn things in in 30 days, or, you know. So it could delay that, but then it also means there's the burden on the teacher for having to find an alternative resource for the 10 students, or the 25 students, or the two students who don't turn that in.
But they're going to do that anyway, even if it's opt-out, they got to find a different resource. There's no difference in the, they got to find, that logic doesn't make any sense.
They do for one or-
If they opt out, they have to find an alternative resource or educational path anyway.
They do for one or two.
What's that?
They do for one or two students, perhaps.
What's the difference between one or two, or 10 or 20? It doesn't matter.
It's a game changer.
They all have different points of view.
No, I don't know.
Or they're in a different class, or, I mean, there's lots of reasons.
The difference, no, no. The difference is if you're in one class, and I have one student there that opts out, now the teacher has to say, okay, I did a different curriculum for that one student. Well, what if we have the opt-in, and we don't hear from 10 students, 20 students? Well, now those 20 students get that curriculum that would have been imposed upon that one student. So I don't see, I don't see your point in terms of being different work. You got a curriculum A and a curriculum B. Whether they opt-in or opt-out, you're still going to have a curriculum A or a curriculum B. So I don't see your logic in that. Maybe I'm missing it.
And I would say to that, that, yes, I can see what you're saying, but as a, as a teacher, so if I am the teacher and I'm sending out the resources to my, and I was a high school teacher, so to my 150 students that I might be teaching, or 125, whatever, and it's opt-in. So I get back 25. Most teachers are not just going to say, 25, that's it. Most teachers are going to be like, let me reach out again, let me contact again. I want to really portray what our teachers actually do. Whenever there's something that we need to collect back from families, some of our teachers will even go to the home and say, listen, I can come pick it up, right? They're going to do due diligence to say, I did everything I could to reach out, email, call back, contact, and do all that to get this information. So that's a real thing that teachers will do, and we know that they do that, because we even see it with field trips, and we've seen what happens on the day of a field trip where, I'm sorry, sweetie, you don't have a permission slip, and even then, we're still calling like, hey, can we get oral, and try to do some stuff like that. So that's part of what, what we may experience.
And I get it, but teachers don't have to do that. They shouldn't do that. The safer tack is, hey, listen, we didn't get the opt-in for you to, you know, read about bestiality, that'd be the ugly thing, I shouldn't even say it, the whatever. So you're going to go there. And teacher, you know, you don't have to go two or three times because that's it. It is the safer tack, which, it was well said, I never even thought about that way. If you're going to err, make an error, let's err on the safer side of the equation versus the other side. So there's no need for the teacher to go back once, you know, two or three times. Didn't get the permission slip, you're going on track B, and you get to read, you know, whatever. I hear what you're saying, and I love the teachers, the fact that they care so much about it. It's a little different between a field trip and the curriculum, I think personally, but I think if you're going to err, err on the side of caution.
But the teacher would have to keep going until the parent or somebody would opt the kid into some type of instruction. So as we continue on-
No, they wouldn't. They, why would they have to do, if they don't opt into instruction A, they, they're getting taught option B, by default.
But they still would have to opt-in. They would, they would have to-
Not if it's not sexually explicit.
Or does it end?
Well, option B is the non-sexually explicit route.
In your opinion?
Very.
Well, based upon our definitions of it, not my opinion.
All right, all right. Let me just say this. This is, there's instructional material that's sexually explicit, then there's instructional material that deals with sundry or subject matters. I'm afraid to say as we continue, so you at least know where I'm coming from, I will not be able to support the motion at this time, personally speaking, because I think that it would adversely impact more students by doing all of this, that we have a process in place that I think allows us to be able to get to every, every kid. And I'm very concerned about our teachers as I go around the buildings and look at what they have to do. And so that's my 15 seconds, so I ain't not going to finish. Others who have not had a chance to speak yet. Dr. Carter.
So what would it look like for opt-in? I just think before you answered it, but the teachers now are under tremendous pressure. And then when we, in May, we're going to look at that list and say, oh my God, what are we doing? What are we doing? Look at all these teachers resigning. We have to look at what we're doing, what we're putting in place. The, like Dr. Edward said, those teachers, they're going to do due diligence, but what would it look like if you have a class of 25, and we know there's going to be a small percentage of people returning any form? So five have opt-in, then, and also what Dr. Sina said is so true, it's almost as though, like the critical race theory, and now the sexually explicit, like, we're doing it. Like, I know you all are doing it. I don't know where people are getting this, that we're doing these things. But, so even if there's a B, I can, as a parent, say, I don't want that either. Well, that's if I opt-in for the B. So what if, you don't opt-in for a B or A, what does the child do? Just sit there?
No, ma'am, we would not do that.
So what would happen to the child?
We would find an alternative resource for that child. And again, we, I know that our teachers would communicate and work with those, with those parents- those parents who have opposition to the materials, and they would find something that is suitable for that child. That takes time for the teacher, it takes, you know, they, as, as Mr. Reed said, they can use a different book, they can use a different novel, they can do, use a different material, they're still learning the same skills, but it does take then some time for that teacher to adapt the lesson to that particular book to teach those skills. Right, as it stands right now, parents would, for sexually explicit con- uh, content, parents would be notified 30 days prior. They would, they would, in that notification, they would receive specific identification of what that material is, they inform them of their right to review the material, they inform them of their right to have a child in a non-punitive way use a different resource. So that's how it stands now, and I can't tell you what it's going to look like, because we haven't, our teachers haven't done this before, so I don't know the increased amount of work or burden that it's going to place on our teachers, but listening to them today from their professional opinion, I have to respect that and say that I, I believe that it will.
And I, I think, I don't think this is an easy problem to, to, to solve, because there are so many bits and pieces that we haven't even, we haven't even discussed. As you said, there are gonna be some students in the class that are doing curriculum A, and some in the class that are doing curriculum B. As a teacher now, that means I've gotta have two lesson plans, I've gotta make sure that students A are on task, I gotta make sure that students B are on task, and then I've gotta make sure that I'm giving at least equal time, effort, instruction to both these sets, sets of students. That's complicated for a teacher to do. The other side to that is, we're talking about sexually questionable material, but there are also other, lots of other things that, that parents are, are going to question. I kind of looked online, trying to think back to my own Teach in America days, there are so many pieces of literature that we taught, that people object to. Some people object to, to teaching Huckleberry Finn, Animal Farm. Some people object to teaching 1984, The Catcher in the Rye, The Color Purple, for different reasons, but people obje- object to all of, to all of those things. So then, the question is, the other side to that is, some of that material is objectionable because of the circumstances that happen in the book, when the truth of the matter is, for some of our students, from a mental health perspective, some of our students are enduring some of the same things that are taking place in those books, and it gives us, as adults, an opportunity to mentor them, to talk to them, to question them, to find out what's going on with them in an objective, not subjective way, so that we can give them the help that they need. So this is not an easy fix. This is something that really requires a whole lot of thinking about all of the different aspects that, that are involved, and I don't think it's something we can just decide. I mean, I think it's gonna take some real soul searching, some real thinking about, some real discussion with people that either have done or are, are doing this, so, that's Gloria's opinion.
Uh, Dr. Gupta, and then the maker of the motion, I think, should get a chance to talk again, and then Dr. Senna.
So, every time I've heard that our policies mirror the VSB policies, right? VSB as sort of a-
VDOE and the-
The Virginia Department of Education.
And so, Campbell County has a, in Brookville High, they send you all the material, and they send you one single form to opt-in, or not to opt-in. So, and their policy, why is it different from ours, although we are capturing from the same reservoir of VSB?
Okay, well, that's a good question, Dr. Gupta, and at least tonight, it's been reaffirmed to me that any of these policies that we have does not even mention the language opt-in or opt-out, but there is this consideration maybe to mirror what it's doing in Campbell County, I think, and this is Lynchburg, Virginia, and this is Lynchburg City School Board, so we would have to decide what we want to do. From a practical perspective, I see a nightmare. Many of you would know my convictions about a lot of things, but we've gotta run a school division with a lot of stress, a lot of challenges, a lot of problems, and to spend exorbitant hours on this, and we have a clear path of how parents can clearly articulate, and I don't know much about utilitarianism, but I mean, is this the greatest good for the greatest number of people to bear that burden, to figure this out, when people have access to know what to do if they don't want to get to have that, and spend all of this time creating all of this, when we're trying to focus on student achievement? I'm finishing my little spiel. Yes, sir, please go right ahead.
So I wanna say a couple things. One of the concerns that has been expressed is that, you know, what does a student do if they do not bring in their form? Now, so, under this hypothetical opt-in scenario, they do not bring in their form, so what does this, what does the teacher do? Well, then, they do the, it's the same as what the teacher would do if they do bring in an opt-out form. They give them alternate instructional materials which are not sexually explicit. In that case, if they're not sexually explicit, there's no policy telling the teachers that they have to inform the students about what's in the content of the book that's not sexually explicit. If it's about aliens, there's no policy that says, we inform the parents, you're gonna have a, a book about aliens. It's only if the alternate materials were also sexually explicit, that they would have to go back to the parents a second time. So the obvious thing to do, if I'm a teacher, I think it's important to teach a book that's on the sexually explicit list, I inform the parents of the students, some of them do not opt-in, then those students use an alternate material that is not sexually explicit, and that's all there is to it. I think that's your point. Secondly, well, okay, I covered my first two points. The last thing I wanted to say is, I know this is controversial, and part of my reason for making the motion is because I think we needed to have this discussion, I need, we need to put the reasons for this on the table, because city council has asked us to. And I understand it's controversial, I understand that not everyone agrees with my motion, I'm fine with that, I want everyone to vote what they really think is right, I'm not trying to twist anyone's arm, I'm just trying to make the case for what I think is the right decision. But I recognize that there are other aspects to it that you are all voicing, and I think we're having a respectful discussion about this, even though we disagree about some aspects of it.
Thank you, Dr. Day, that was very well said. Dr. Brennan.
And I agree with Dr. Day, that I think that we are having a respectful discussion, and we should have this discussion, it's an important issue to the community, and I think we need to have it. I will take a, a different approach than Dr. Day, in that I think things were said very well in public comments, I will not read my whole list and go through the whole thing, but I will say in brief, that I think that it's been clearly shown to us, and I think supplemented at this meeting in our agenda, that we have policies that address the issues that people have concerns about. And I think one of the key policies that are in our agenda is pretty specific, which is policy ABB, which is supplement material selection and adoption, how it happens, and specifically it states that teachers must carefully review materials prior to use, and exercise a high degree of professional judgment in their selection and use of supplementary materials to ensure that the use of such materials serves to both support and complement the basic educational objectives within the specific subject areas in classrooms, which is what the chairs of the Department of English at EC Glass said, chair of English at Heritage High School said, president of Lynchburg Education Association said. I mean, this is what the teachers are saying, and as Dr. Senna said at our last meeting, we need to respect the teachers. This is their job to do this, and it's not the job of, it's, it's the job of certainly parents to be concerned about their, their children and what they receive, and they should have an option to do that. And that was the other issue that was brought up by other people, saying, what is the option? And fortunately, we have a policy for that too, which is policy KLB, which is Public Complaints About Learning Resources, outline specific processes that families follow. Mr. Reed said that, so I want to reiterate, but I will say that one of the concerns about our policy for, for the, the information in our original policy is that it was a little soft on what do parents do if they don't get satisfactory answers. Well, this policy answers that. The complaint may appeal the decision to the superintendent or the superintendent's destiny to address it, or to the school board. So if you go, if a parent goes through the process, they're not satisfied, they can go to that level, including the school board. So there's not concern that there's not a way for parents to do this. So, I am not in favor of changing the policy, which we voted on, and for three reasons. One is that this policy we're talking about was mandated by the depart- the Virginia Department of Education, asked us to do that, and we have followed their recommendations. And they did not necessarily ask for an opt-in or opt-out. We decided to do the one that was most appropriate for our school district, and based on our teachers' recommendations. I think it's clear, when we had the discussion originally, this was gonna be burdensome if we did an opt-in policy, as far as what our teachers are having to do now to screen the information, get it on the website, have all those things done. It's clear from the teachers that if we do the, the opt, the, the other option, it's gonna be more burdensome, and, you know, who knows how often it will be, but I think it will be more often than we assume, as, as I think was put forward by Ms. Pugh.
I hope not.
I hope not too, but who, you know, we don't know that. So, I think that addressing this policy, that we should have the responsibility for evaluating and selecting instructional materials in the hands of the teachers, as part of their professional responsibility and training, and that the responsibility for reviewing instructional materials is in the hands of the parent or the guardian based on their concerns for their child, and that's, they should have the option to do that, and they do in this option. And I think that there is a policy in place to adjudicate the concerns that parents may have, including going to level the superintendent. I think we talk about respecting the teachers, supporting the teachers, how important the teachers are to us, I think they are telling us they want the policy kept the same, and I think we need to respect that, and I can hear Mr. Reed yelling at his television as we speak.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Senna.
The only thing I would change in this policy, it really troubles me that this thing about sexually explicit content in nowhere mentions sexual assault, which could be very triggering to somebody who is a survivor of sexual assault, even if it's mentioned in passing. Why is it not on this list? So I would recommend that when we do our review, we also include depictions, they don't have to be in detail, you know, to kill a mockingbird, crime in there is a sexual assault. My knowledge, it's been a while since I read the book, it doesn't go into great detail about what happens, but just the mere mention of a sexual assault could be quite triggering and traumatic for some of our students who have unfortunately experienced that. So, please, when you do this review, please keep that in mind as well, and think of those students.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Senna. Dr. Day, I want to thank you for bringing the motion to us tonight, the courage to do that, I think it has been necessary for us to have the discussion, the will of the board will be determined in just a moment, but I want to thank you. And in your presentation, you even took us to appreciate parents who innocently didn't know all of our robust efforts to put it out there, or whatever the case may be, they just forgot that do not want their kid to be exposed to that type of information, and they just didn't get it in, and kid is there getting the information, and that's a concern of yours. I appreciate you for sharing that. I, this may not happen, but I think it does, I'm also thinking about the kids, the real wonderful kids we have, who go to school, and for whatever the reason, the parent may or may not even have an interest, I'm not saying that that exists, and that kid doesn't even necessarily have someone to do all of that, and I'm concerned about whoever those kids may be also. And so therefore, we've got all of this good stuff to let those persons who need to know, and we gotta do the best job we can, and if we want that to be even more than it is, we're gonna think about hiring somebody to help the people to do all of that stuff. But to make people aware of what we're doing, and to allow parents to exercise those opportunities to say, I don't want my kid to have that, probably might be the best way for us to go at this point. I, I don't know, but if there's any, no further questions or discussion, we have a motion, we're not talking about reconsidering the policy, I didn't understand that to be the merit or the nature of Dr. Day's motion. He wants us to go and consider this, look at it, and see what the potential opt-in, opt-out language is.
My proposal was to formulate-
Formulate, okay.
Um, modifications that would encompass what we're referring to as an opt-in approach.
Right.
And then those would come back to us for review, and then we would vote on their approval.
Yes, sir.
As we formulate that, I hope we also look at the library access to the material, if you have opted out.
That's why I said policies, relevant policies.
If we don't mend it, the library is, we don't have to deal with that, right?
Well, library material is not considered instructional material-
That's correct.
Unless it is specifically selected by the teacher to use in instruction. Library books that a student, that a student goes into the library to select on their own and to check out, those are not instructional materials.
Everybody clear on that?
And that's why I think the scope is so narrow.
So you wanted a clarification?
I just want a clarification, because I'm, I'm sort of understanding, and I think this is what we want to vote on, is that, do we want to change the policy, do we want to investigate, change the policy to opt-in rather than opt-out? So those of us who are in favor of keeping the policy as it is, would vote against this, this motion. If you're in favor of going to an opt-in policy, then you would support this.
Because your language is to formulate opt-ins, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so if you are in support of Dr. Day's motion that was seconded by-
Dr. Charles.
Mr. Charles. If you're in favor of that, you are actually saying that you want us to get administration, et cetera, to come back with a recommendation that would include the opt-in language. If you are not in favor of going through a process of formulating opt-in language, which mean ultimately leave the policy as it is, you would vote no. If there's no further discussion on the motion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
School board member, Ms. Preston.
No.
School board member, Mr. Charles.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Senna.
No.
School board member, Dr. Brennan.
No.
School board member, Dr. Coleman.
No.
School board member, Dr. Carter.
No.
School board member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Day.
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Andrews.
No.
Motion fails.
Uh, six to three.
Hold on, wait a minute.
Yes.
You hear that noise? It's the, the students leaving the LCA.
Crystal didn't laugh.
All right.
Funny.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the make of the motion, the second of the motion, and for the discussion tonight, and I hope, in a larger sense, that our distinguished members of council and the community realize that we dealt with this issue tonight, and I think some real solid points have been made on both sides, and we respect our parents, we really do, and we hope that as we continue, that this problem will work itself out, and that we will not have flight from our school division, but that we will all begin to trust the work that we're doing, and come together and do what is best for our kids, to educate the kids that are in front of us. All right, J3, FY 2022-23 budget calendar, Dr. Edwards.
Yeah, so we have attached a copy of the current budget calendar, and I think it was mentioned earlier that we are a little bit behind schedule, but so that folks can see, in January, we normally have an estimate of the revenues, we've presented our funding request to city manager, that process is a little different as well, so we, we are behind in January, but we anticipate doing the January work in February, along with the February work, so that we will be right back on schedule with our budget calen- with our budget calendar. There are, and you, you read recently, there's some proposals to add an additional percentage to the already 5% that was spoken for last year in the, in the compensation for staff, SOQ-funded staff. Also, there is a question about the potential Calcool era that's still out there, so there's a couple things that are looming that we don't have the exact answers to, we hope to have those soon. I will talk about that Calcool era in a little bit later, under new business, because that's new.
Okay, thank you.
I'm afraid to go forward, I don't know anybody. Dr. Gupta.
You know, Ms. Karen, we ask her a lot of questions, but Dr. Edwards, she's doing an excellent job.
Sure.
She's working hard, and you're providing the numbers you have-
Dr. Gupta.
You know, Ms. Karen, we ask her a lot of questions, but Dr. Edwards, she's doing an excellent job.
Sure.
She's working hard, and you're providing the numbers you have. You just joined the division, you've done an excellent job. So please don't take a correlation between asking questions and the quality of you. So you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Dr.
See that on the finance, very transparent.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta, for saying that. All right, J4, the FY 24 Operating Budget, Dr. Edwards.
Yes, so I will kind of tee this up to what we're doing and also go over what is listed under Public Content. So first, just to remind our public as well as our school board, at our December budget work session, we provided a lot of documents that are also linked in the board agenda for December 13th. But I put a click here if anybody wanted to go back and get information about demographics and a whole bunch of things that lead into how we do the budget. Then there's a note about the Calc tool actually being, originally the error was on the June 6th, which is what we used to, which was what was presented on December 13th. We have since learned that that same error also affects December 16th Calc tool, which I'm going to go over today. But I wanted to publicly make that note so that everyone would be able to follow through. The bulk of what we want to talk about is what we discussed in Finance Committee, which is the biggest part of our budget proposal right now, and that is the 1550 pay schedule plan, $15 an hour for our classified being the minimum that we would offer next year, and also $50,000 being the minimum for our teaching staff. The notes that are included under that summary are the same notes that were shared with the Finance Committee meeting so that you can see how we arrived at 1550, taking our lowest pay classified, which is at $13.11, adding $1.89 per hour. And then, of course, we factor that across multiple pay tables. The teacher pay tables, our starting salary is somewhere in the neighborhoods of $43,000, so a little bit over that. So adding $65.30 would bring that up to $50,000, and we pulled that across pay tables. And then, of course, the admin pay tables, which aren't in 15 or 50, but rather we were trying to do due diligence to the average of the 5%, which if you take the lowest paid on the admin table, that 5% is a flat dollar amount of 2, 2744. So that is a short explanation as to how the math was done to arrive at 1550. Underneath, you'll see the start of that Excel spreadsheet that you all will be getting. But we just used it to kind of start right now. That maps what we're talking about to our strategic plan goals, and you can see the cost of each one of those individual things. So we broke it down by admin, by classified, and by teaching salary. We gave you the overall cost for if you were to increase the classified staff to the proposed 15. That is the cost of that. We've subsequently, since the Finance Committee gone back and said, well, we know if salaries go up, so do the contributions to VRS and other things, which I've indicated in that spreadsheet what those percentages are. So you can see how we've arrived at the additional cost for that.
I'm sorry, which document are you reading?
I'm on the same page.
I'm actually in Board Docs looking at
Just that spreadsheet?
That spreadsheet that's in Board Docs, yes. The color-coded one that says total cost associated with proposed 1550 pay schedule.
I'm not finding it.
It's in the public content of Board Docs.
We also got that.
Okay. So, and I could always also give you hard copies of this, but I put it here so the public can also follow along as we're talking. But it has the total cost for the salary increase and the benefits for each of those different three groups. Let me stress that it is just the total cost. It doesn't take into effect a compensation supplement. It doesn't take into effect any conversations about any additional supplement or any other revenue that we would subtract away. Remember, we've done this before where we said, here's the total cost, and we take out the revenue that we anticipate to help fund that cost, and then we're left over with, this is what we still need. So at this point, we're just at, let's look at the total cost. And let's also, if you open up the individual documents, which I made one hard copy, but try to save paper, look like this. And this is really important for staff who, some have asked questions, but most of them have been really great. Because one of the questions was if you move the teacher's salary up to the starting salary up to $50,000, what if I'm not a starting teacher? What happens to me? And these pay tables, actually, you can go find yourself and see that you are above 50 somewhere, and I don't know the exact number. But we publicly put these pay tables so that our public, our staff, anybody who has a question about how does that affect a classified member who has, who's on Step 12, what does that look like? As well as the admin staff being completely transparent, one of the things you'll notice is the difference between percentages as you get to the admin pay tables. The percentages are smaller because we went with a flat dollar amount, whereas at the classified tables, the percentages are a little bit higher. So we wanted to share this with the school board. It is a big cost associated with it. And while we do have compensation supplement, remember that's for SOQ-funded, not enough revenue totally to completely fund this complete 1550 proposal. And the only way to do that, since we do not have taxing authority or revenue generating authority, and we certainly don't want to put all this in grant funds if grant funds were available, is to work with City Council on that. So I wanted us to really have a discussion about where is the board before we really craft, there's other pieces that are going to fit into this, but it was really important for the board to have a discussion about this, as did the Finance Committee.
Dr. Gupta.
So I asked the same question in Finance, I'm asking it again. Could we internally save $9 million? That's what I think this whole thing, not counting the 28% overhead for benefits. You know, that's not in that number. Could we internally save through reallocation of resources and whatever it takes, $9 million, $9 million within our system in this fiscal year?
So we'll give you the same answer I gave the Finance Committee, and I'll say, we are definitely looking at where we can find some savings. We have been doing that over the last five years, kind of tightening the belt. We've removed some things that were, and as I shared with Finance Committee, we used to have several positions that we would just have as contingency, like just in case we need to hire. And up until even the pandemic, it was three at the middle school, three at the high school, three at the elementary school. We're now just down to one or two, are we at three, Karen, maybe? Not even a lot of positions. So we have tightened the belt over the last couple of years. So the short answer to your, can I find $9 million that I'm going to reallocate, is no. The working answer is, are we looking for ways to chop away at this? Yes.
So for those that are not in Finance Committee, what he's referring to is the total amount, it's $8.6 million, tack on 20% for benefits. It comes up to $10.3 million. So we have to decide if we, do we want to pay for everybody? Or just teachers, or admin, or classified, or whatever? But that's what he's talking about when he says $9 million.
Which is approaching 10% of our total operating budget. And when, what, 80% of your operating budget is personnel costs, you're trying to get that 10% of your total budget out of just 20% of...
See, next year, if the governor says 5% increase, then you got to count 5% of that $10 million new to make up for that gap. You see what I'm saying? So there'll be another half a million dollars you need extra because you increased the salary now, you know what I'm saying? So if you look at long term, that's why I was asking, do we have the cash flexibility in the division? Are we able to sustain that?
Dr. Carter?
I was just wanting to advocate that we ask questions now. I know in prior years, it takes time to do these pay tables. And at the last time meeting, when the pay tables are already done, then it was a question which led to compression, which led to a lot of people being very upset because their salaries were compressed. But this, at the Capitol Conference, there was a $220 million mistake, mathematical mistake. One person, one congressman or person from the Virginia Senate stated that this was known that it would happen. We talked to our representatives, and two of them stated it was a mathematical error. I haven't seen anyone leaving. That's a huge mathematical error to make. But I hear that this is going to follow us for several years. The mistake, and how, there's still not, there's still not a way of how we're going to be able to recoup that money? They're going to find a way to make it come back in and hold blameless, or you don't want to add it to salaries because it's not sustainable? With all of that, going forward, what do we do?
Big loaded question there. So as far as the error is concerned, I know we are waiting for exact confirmation. And we've had two meetings with, two webinars, I should say, with VDOE. And I am going to go over what they share with us as, here's how you individually divisions can calculate your own, but we'll tell you later what your actual revenue is. And we asked for, well, what are the solutions? What are the strategies? And we did, we received, we'll give you technical assistance, which is really how to calculate what the error is. So right now, we're waiting to figure out what the end game is with this. We've heard, you've heard lots of folks say, we're going to fix it, we're going to make you whole, we're going to do a whole bunch of things. But until we actually get our actual revenue, I don't know the answer to that, and I don't know the direction that the state is going to take with regard to putting that forward. So I don't have an answer for you as to how those two things relate and what we would do going forward with that.
But new board members, keep this, make that a bookmark, because our number one responsibility is to make sure that we financially viable. So if this ever comes up, that we know exactly how we were short-changed or this shortfall occurred. The other thing is, I hear from a lot of senior teachers, I see the teachers, so how is, will this help the teachers that have been here, that are the mentors that have to help the new teachers coming in?
So I will say what I've said publicly, that yes, this is something that is probably aggressive for us, given where we've been the last couple, at least since I've been here, with not receiving additional money for salary outside of the state compensation. But if you look at, and I'm just on the bottom of one of the pay tables, so if I'm somebody here with, you know, I've been here for, Step 29 is at 64,000, 64,216. Going Step 29 next year would be 70, 746. So we tried our best not to compress and have it so that our, you know, we want to attract new, and I think you heard that tonight, we want to attract new staff and qualified staff here. But we also have to recognize, we have some very talented people who are here, who we also want to keep in honor and value. So when you look at the pay tables, you'll see that adjustment, even though the top line is 50, we tried to adjust that out all the way down to the end of the pay table.
And just one more question. I noticed that some physicians were referred to as secretary and some admin assistant.
So one of the things that we had decided, and actually it was after meeting with a couple of different secretaries, is that when you think about the term secretary and you look at the work that the people in the building are doing with regard to, and I'll, you know, use a building secretary, managing the principal's calendar, working with parents, doing a lot, it's more of an administrative assistant. They do a lot of, and we rely on them to do that work. So one of the things that we had proposed was changing the name, and that had been suggested to me, from a secretary to an administrative assistant. But prior to doing that, and we thought this would be a great time going into a new school, a new school year, that we would show that. But we also were updating the job description so that people could be really clear about what is the difference between an administrative assistant one. Some administrative assistants, you know, are just more on the clerical level. That might be your one. Some of them handle everything, but they don't do the finance part. They don't do the POs, the requisitions. There's a bookkeeper that does that. And then some are in, if you look at a division-level administrative assistant, they're everything. They do the budgeting, the POs, they do the purchase cards and all of that, like similar to what the board experiences. So those three job descriptions are outlined and explained so that you could see that. The transition from wherever you are depends on your job description. And what we want to do is sit down and have conversations, similar to when we moved the nurses, we also moved, I forget who else, it was another group that we moved, have conversations with individuals so they know this is what you do, let's make sure this is what you do, this is where you are going forward.
All right, to the, excellent, Dr. Carter, as we move along, to the larger point that I think Dr. Carter is driving us to. It's no need to continue to have admin do all of this work dealing with compression issues, recognizing the potential challenge with the $220 million. And Dr. Carter is right on that. Ms. Preston and I also were in those sessions to hear some of our representatives wanting to come up with a viable solution to help us. Well, we got to wait and see what that is or isn't going to be. I've heard Dr. Waterco say several times in public presentations, if not to us, we've got to get good teachers. We've got to put in front of our students the very best. So if we're resolved to do this, and maybe we will need some help from our local appropriating body at this level. Seems like we need to make it known that. I support the 1550 piece. I would like for the Finance Committee and whomever to keep exploring this and for us to take a deep breath, because it could mean any number of things to get where we are. One of the public comment presenters, I don't even want to get into mentioning who it might have been. You know, at one point, we were okay in this area, leading the area. If we're going to lead the area, I think we need to make those hard decisions to do that, or at least put forth our best effort. So what is the pleasure of the board? I think that's what I'm hearing. Because again, and I do want you all to know that a lot of these boards spend hours and hours and hours on budget in separate meetings and so forth. And so, Dr. Senha, thank you for taking on a great task of being in the Finance Committee leader and all of that. What does the board want to do about this? Are we resolved to do the 1550, or are we not? We know we have no charge of the purse, we can't raise taxes or taxing authority. It's got to go what she made. Dr. Gupta asked a question, she answered it. So what do you want us to do? Keep going or move away?
You know, we got to do something. Because last year, I remember Dr. Carter brought in a proposal for $15 minimum, and I was that bad guy who said, no, that's not good. So I know we love our teachers and we love hourly staff equally. Maybe we can do one now and one later, you see what I'm saying? So one is about $5.2 million, the other is about 2.9 million? 2.9. So could we take the lower one to try to see if we can climb that mountain? Or just give up and don't climb any of those mountains? I wish I had taken Dr. Carter's offer last year and voted for $15 an hour. Because we are losing bus drivers. You know, we are losing these people to surrounding counties. We're falling behind. And it is, it has become a human issue. Hourly employees are working two, three jobs. I gave you an example of a gentleman here. I said, are you going to have dinner? He said, no, she brings me here because I do two jobs. So I'm not able to go home. So that should not be the case. It's not a conservative or a non-conservative issue, it's a human issue. And so I'm saying too much, but that's what I see.
We appreciate your thoughts, they're very important. Dr. Carter, you want to say?
I'm going to use "and." I'm for all or nothing. I think we should ask. Everyone is working hard. I see different, from the admin to the bus drivers, to the attendance clerk, everyone does above and beyond. And I don't see how you can separate it out.
I didn't say separate. I didn't separate out bus drivers. What I was saying is hourly wages.
I'm thinking we'll try to do all that we can for everyone.
Dr. Senha.
I would say with way cost of living has gone up, cost of housing has gone way up, rents are really up. That the time for half measures is gone. And we, half measures won't cut it. And so I fully support the fifteen fifty plan. And um I I challenge our our city council members to spend a day in the life of a school bus driver or a teacher. And and then come back to us to say, no, you have to do a half measure. But we need to ask for a full measure. We're gonna retain teachers, attract teachers, and be fully staffed. Especially since there's a, prior to the pandemic, there was a severe shortage of teachers out there. It's only gotten worse. So I fully support this measure and all that it costs.
All right, unless it's, go ahead, Dr. Brennan.
So I I agree with my fellow board members, and I'm supportive of doing this, and I think we, it's important and we need to do it. A question I have as far as the overall budget goes is that we know that we we need to have more funds put into health insurance payments. So what is, is that also gonna be added on to the budget, or are there other, you know, what else are we gonna do in the budget besides the salaries?
So there's a few other things, what we're trying to do is is be our primary focus. Um, you know, lots of positions were asked for and those sorts of things. So we're trying to really focus on this. There are a few sort of mandated things that we know, you know, we know fuel is more expensive now. Uh we know insurance is an issue, and so there's there's a few other things that that'll be there. And I think we'll be prepared to kind of have a a better vision of that probably next time. Um, so you can see what that balance looks like. Um particularly if we get a better understanding of what the state money's gonna look like.
Thank you.
But it won't be as exhaustive as it was last year.
Right, right, sure, but we'll get the key items.
Yeah.
Dr. Gupta.
You know, there's a reality and there's a dream. Dream I have is that everybody should get it. But as per Mr. Andrews' ten point two million dollars, that's about ten percent of our operating. So you're going to ask for ten million dollars of new money, is that possible? It's not a viable option. So what is the second viable option? Can I do it in P um steps? Do one step now, two sec- second step later on? And attain it through internal efficiencies, you know, that's why I asked Dr. Edwards, could we save that money internally? So if somebody says, I'm not giving you, we are still able to achieve our objective.
But Dr. Gupta, I think your point is well taken, and I think the the finance team, the administration will will look for as many efficiencies as we possibly can. Oh, I, you know, I um, and I hear you, and for a few years, I I embraced the fact of that, you know, you can't do all this dreaming. But it's, I applaud our superintendents, all of the, I, this is hard. I mean, and and we've gotta let persons, so and and we're constantly wanting to dump more and more on everybody. Even when you talk about the bus drivers, heck, even the, I don't know, they've gotta pass all these tests with all of this information, and we're fighting in Washington today to try to get them to stop all of that. You gotta know everything under the engine and what the parts are and all of this, by the time you even get a bus driver, it's way down the road of the school year. Listen, let us dream. That calendar that we talking about approving a few years ago, there was no Martin Luther King holiday on there. And people had to fight for that to happen. We've got to get these teachers and classified workers what they need. And I say, let them go ahead with it, and let's figure out whatever that's gonna look like. Unless y'all wanted to labor labor this a little bit more, we can move on to the next map. Now, Mr. Tros.
I don't know how we'll find ten million bucks. I think, is there a compromise, a split in the baby? Uh, you know, it's not a fifteen fifty, it's a whatever, whatever. Every, they all deserve, I mean, they need a working wage, our teachers are not, are underpaid, a hundred percent behind it. And I wanna dream, I just wanna uh, I wanna be able to get the ball across the goal line, and I just, I mean, ten million dollars, ten percent of our budget. I would love to do it. But I just, I mean, I wanna give them something rather than come up short. And again, to to Dr. Carter's point, I don't wanna keep slicing and dicing down the road. Maybe we can get half of that done, five million bucks, I don't know, I mean.
Point well taken, Dr. Gupta.
I was about to make a joke, so they can opt out then if they don't want the money.
But I voted for opt-in, baby.
I'm all about supporting everybody, so I'm I'm the supporter of the fifteen fifty.
Yeah, I guess we, but I do wanna hear lastly from Dr. uh Gupta and Dr. Day.
I just want to make sure that dreaming is fine, but then we need to manage expectations. Cause when we start dreaming, then the expectations build up. And then be calling Mr. Andrews saying, where is my fifty thousand dollars?
Write that check, might bounce, go write that check.
But there's gonna have to be a lot of advocacy around this, and that's what we have to be prepared for, and that's where the fight comes. Other people fight for things, we can fight for what we feel is important, if in fact we feel that way. Dr. Day.
Yeah, I'm debating whether I should say what I was contemplating saying, I probably will, and I'll probably get in trouble for it. But um I support the fifteen fifty as well. I think that the teachers in our classrooms are the primary tool that does what we're here to do. And I don't mean to suggest that um uh Dr. Edwards and the other staff have not been as thorough in looking for efficiencies as they might have been. But I wonder if we need to be contemplating more draconian things. Particularly if we go to city council and say we needed ten million dollars, if you won't give it to us, here's where we're gonna get it. So what if we compile a list of things that are unthinkable, but that would generate ten million dollars? We kill both high school football programs, we close the Laurel Academy, we close the Virtual Academy. What if we put, I'm not saying we do those things, please understand. What I'm trying to do is present a case for what level of what it would cost us to do this if we don't get support from city council. Now, you may be think I'm nuts. But if I was sitting on city council and somebody was coming to me with this huge request, I would say, well, what alternatives do you have? So I think we oughta be ready to go with, to them with some pretty dramatic alternatives.
Well, well said, Dr. Day, so noted, uh and we will now move on to our new business. Uh listen, folks.
I know, that's what I said.
Keeping a keeping a nine-member board together is not an easy task. But I think we do very well, appreciating everybody's thoughts. And I know sometimes it can take a little while, but this has been a massive meeting uh tonight where we've dealt with a lot, including public comments and our kids. Now, we're gonna try to labor through this new business, all right? Uh K one, amend the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three LCS calendar, Dr. Edwards.
Yes, so it was brought to our attention that this coming school year, we normally have graduation on Sunday. We've been alternating who goes in the morning, who goes in the afternoon. Um, but we had a conflict with some events at City Stadium with the afternoon. Um, Dr. Wodica, both high school principals and a team of folks all got together and worked out what could we do, including some city folks, and they came up with the proposal that if uh one school graduated Saturday morning, the other one graduated Sunday morning, as we we anticipated, we could get those schools out before noon, that would work for the community. Um, it was just a matter of working with the schools, and they were awesome and amazing and doing that. So they said yes, and they brought it to us, and they said, can you please just bring that to the board? Because we do have to officially change our calendar to reflect this. But I did want the board and the community to know that this was a huge effort from boots on the ground and the people who are affected by it. So Glass is proposing to graduate on June third, Saturday, June third, at eight thirty. And Heritage is still on Sunday at, June fourth, at eight thirty in the morning.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, Dr. Brennan.
I think assuming that this has been vetted thoroughly by the schools and by the community, that I'd like to make a motion that uh that the school board approve the amended two thousand twenty-two, two thousand three school calendar.
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Brennan, seconded by Dr. Carter, that we will amend the twenty-two, twenty-three LCS school calendar to accommodate the EC Glass graduation on the said date and the Heritage High School graduation on the said dates and time. And any further questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
School board member, Ms. Preston, approved. School board member, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Senha.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Day.
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and now we'll have discussion on the VDOE correction to the basic aid estimates in the calculating tool error, Dr. Edwards.
Yes, so uh on the public agenda are a couple of different items. One is the um December sixteenth Calc tool, um which is an instrument that we get from VDOE with everything already populated in there for us. Um, we do have the ability to change projected ADM, we usually don't mess with that. Um, we usually end up higher than what they project. But the the ADM is used to calculate many of the different revenue streams that you'll see there. Basic aid is a revenue stream, sales tax, what they give us for textbook, folk ed, and so on and so forth. Um, but when you hear us refer to the Calc tool, what I did was print it for the general public so they they can kind of see this is what it looks like, it's two years' worth of projected revenue, and you'll see FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four. So when we were alerted that there was an error in the Calc tool and that it may result in us receiving less basic aid, um certainly, we wanted to know, well, where where is that, what does that look like, and what is the error? So just for purposes of people who are listening, our current basic aid um in the current year is twenty-two point four million. That is the state share, and the local share is thirteen point five. So what the error ascent in a sense says is that will be reduced by a certain amount. We were given a formula and an explanation of how to use it. There is a PowerPoint presentation um for the general public. I did share this with um um the finance committee and in my quarterly meetings with school boards. But it is also on board docs for the public to sort of follow along so that you can see the components of the error. I've, on the first page, I've highlighted what the basic aid is, um our LCI, and then how we get to that actual calculation, which is uh pretty intense. But the calculation was from the Sups memo where the VDOE gave us a formula that says to see how to reduce your basic aid, take one minus the local composite index times the division grocery tax hold harmless amount. Right, which for the average person watching would be like, what does that mean, right? So if you are on our website, if you're on board docs, you can see that I've actually done, like a good math teacher, what those calculations look like. And by the way, if you're looking at the Calc tool, it does not say grocery tax, even though that's how we're referring to it. But the actual revenue source is supplemental GF payments in lieu of food and hygiene tax, which is on line forty-three. Um, so basically, after doing the math on this year's, the local, I'm sorry, the state share of our projected reduction from our original twenty-two point four million is about five hundred and nine thousand dollars. That's the state share. The local share of that is another three hundred and six thousand, making a total somewhere upwards about eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. That is a potential, and I say potential because we haven't received the actual numbers, or if there's a remedy in place, it hasn't been publicly shared. But that's potentially what we would have to reduce the current year's basic aid by about eight hundred and sixteen thousand. Next year, it's worse. So using the same formulas, it's about two point oh one million next year. That we would have to reduce our revenue from the state. So that is the error that all of us are um not happy about. But we are waiting, and we know that there are folks who are trying to come up with ways to to fix that. That will impact us in the current year, it also impacts how we budget going forward next year. So to your question of, you know, what what does it look like? I really need to see what this is gonna look like, cause that may also impact what we what we do. But I know we had a discussion at finance committee, I wanted to also share that here with the board. But I also wanted to have a very simplistic public PowerPoint, so the public can follow along and see how those numbers were calculated using the formula that was given to us by the state.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and I think we probably just need to wait now to see what's gonna happen with this. Everybody's aware of it. You had school board members boots on the ground when it first came out in Richmond advocating on our behalf. And so um thank you for all of that. Thank you, Dr. Edwards, for that level of transparency and information. K three, nineteen ninety-three, city schools agreement. All right, go right ahead, um you got my name here.
I do have your name there, Dr. Coleman, not Mr. Coleman, Dr. Coleman. Just to talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, so as you are aware, our current council is wanting to revisit an agreement that the Lynchburg City School Board and Lynchburg City Council ended into in nineteen ninety-three. You see the corresponding letter, and it is an action to terminate or modify that. And what uh we need to do is to understand that it's happening. Uh what will be the impact if they do it? Uh what will be the impact if we advocate for that partnership agreement to continue? Is uh what we need to weigh in on as we're seeking to build relationships? Does it even really matter to fight over it, to dispute? Or is it something that we think it would be uh good to advocate? Uh it will be council's decision one way or the other. And so you have the letter, um we've tried to talk to some of the participating parties uh uh that were a part of this. And I'm not sure what information we were able to find from any of those individuals, yeah. So what is the pleasure on the board concerning this matter?
Mr. Chair, if I could, um Dr. Day has summarized the discussion that we had in finance and facilities regarding the memo. If you could share those.
Yeah, we'd be delighted to hear that, very good.
So what we talked about is the possibility of writing a letter back to the city council. Basically, just making some observations about the implications of rescinding that agreement, which is what they're, some of them are pushing to do. And so I took the initiative of writing out, in my words, some of the points that we made in talking about it at the finance committee. And so I'm gonna read to you this formulation of the points that we came up with. Number one, state law requires LCS to return on spent funds to city council at the end of each fiscal year. Whether or not the nineteen ninety-three understanding continues, city council has the authority to deny or approve requests to return those funds all in part to LCS. The nineteen ninety-three agreement does not limit city a council's authority over those funds in any way. Absent this agreement, LCS could still come to city council with requests for supplementary appropriations in the event of unforeseen circumstances. The agreement thus constitutes only an understanding that requests for returns of fund balance for specific purposes will generally be entertained by city council without committing city council to any particular response. Rescinding the nineteen, rescinding of the nineteen ninety-three agreement implies that city council would not generally be receptive to future return of fund balance requests. Hence, needs that might have been addressed through fund balance return would have to be added to future LCS operating budgets instead. This is likely to both increase future operating budgets and lengthen the time between the identification of unanticipated critical projects and when work on them could begin. The existing agreement allows at least some of those unanticipated projects to be addressed more quickly and with funds already allocated to the schools for other purposes, but which for any number of reasons were not able to be utilized for their originally intended purposes. For example, if LCS is trying to hire instructional staff with particular qualifications, LCS cannot reallocate the funds budgeted for those positions while the search for those staff is ongoing. If LCS approaches the end of the fiscal year with those positions still unfilled, we find ourselves still holding those funds but unable to we find ourselves still holding those funds but unable to use them for the intended purpose. The agreement seems to provide a reasonable mechanism for using those funds for other purposes, subject to City Council's review and approval. It has been surmised that there were reasons this agreement was put in place in 1993, presumably to eliminate perverse incentives or prevent abuses that had taken place in the past. We would suggest that those reasons should be investigated and understood before the agreement is altered, lest the door be opened for those abuses to return. As has been suggested, rescinding the agreement would create perverse incentives for LCS to find ways to spend down its fund balance as the end of the fiscal year approaches, leading to potentially hasty or ill-considered expenditures. That may well be the kind of problem that the agreement was intended to prevent. And then lastly, an alternative to rescinding the agreement might be to amend it to require an accounting of how funds approved by City Council for return to LCS were actually expended as part of LCS's reporting at the end of the fiscal year.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Senha and Dr. Day for that overview summary of the reflections from the Finance Meeting discussion and other discussions. Did you get that on the table for thought? Any other board member want to say something else, and then we'll know what we got to discuss on this matter? Dr. Brennan.
I'd just like to thank Dr. Day for putting that together, and I think that's a very good approach to this. I think the Finance Committee talked about, or someone talked about, there were three options. One was to keep it as it is, which I think we in City Council probably don't want to do that. This is a 1993 agreement. It needs to be, something needs to be done with it. The other is to revise it, and the third is to do away with it completely. And I really think that, as you, well stated, that, you know, I think that we feel, the board feels, that we're in a partnership with city schools, with City Council, who owns the buildings, and we maintain them and use them, that we want that partnership to continue, and that we, because of the experience of our staff, know the buildings, I don't want to say better than city schools does, but are, City Council, but we're more aware of the problems, and that to make that proposal where we would like to list things that we think are appropriate for one-time expenses to work on the schools or thing, and it goes to City Council, and they can deny it or not, which I think has been sort of the underlying feeling for us since those of us have been on the board, it wasn't a slam dunk that they were going to give us the money. So I think that makes a lot of sense. I'd much rather do that and do it in partnership with City Council than to leave it as it is or to do away with it completely, because as you point out, it then opens up a much more difficult situation, including, does it put us in a position where we're feeling that we need to spend funds that we may not need to spend?
So you're advocating a revised version of it?
Which I think is what you're, yes, I'm advocating.
The last bit I said was one possible thing. The rest of it was arguments.
Right. I think we should advocate for a revised position based on the points as you've made, rather than do away with it for the reasons that you've said. So that's what I'm.
So before I get to Dr. Gupta, I just want to understand, you are advocating, or at least articulating, in light of everything that's been said, revision, and that's on your list of possibilities?
That was, that was one point that I made.
One of your lists of your possibilities. Okay, I got that clear. All right, Dr. Gupta, and then Dr. Carter. But Dr. Carter, you go first then, Dr. Gupta.
I don't think, I would like more clarification. What is this saying? So if I was at home looking at this, what is this saying?
What is what saying?
What is this document saying, letter of agreement?
The letter.
Are you looking at the 1993 document?
Yes.
What the 1993 document established is what we currently are operating under, wherein our fund balance piece goes back to them, and then there's this discussion around what do we want in that capital improvement, as I've understood it across the years. And if we take this away, then it means that, you know, they don't have to give it to us at all.
You know, I like what I hear. To me, two of you and Dr. Day can figure out the verbiage and send it out to the City Council.
As it relates to revision?
Whatever the verbiage.
Okay. All right, so we can go with that, but Dr. Carter getting back, just want to make sure.
And explain, and fund balance, I think we need to take a few, like what is, what would that be?
Dr. Edwards.
So the people, so we can get a clear understanding of what, how important this is, or?
In terms of what we would use it for, or what?
No, like what fund balances are left over, the amount that we haven't expended?
Correct. So that, this is where it gets to be, and I think Ms. Kapazi tried to explain the difference between sort of what's left unspent, what's unaccounted for, what's in open POs and things like that. So typically, for the purposes of this work, the fund balances, after we've done all of our audits and accounted for any of the open POs where things were purchased but have not been received, and then that's the amount that is left that we're like, okay, this is the actual fund balance. I guess it would be more cash, if we could say that. We typically use it and ask, request it to do capital improvement.
Yeah, we've gotten real good with that in the most recent iteration. Isn't that correct, Dr. Edwards, in terms of getting that down?
Yes.
Yeah.
In a business, it would be a net profit.
Okay.
Yeah.
My, my understanding is that it's, it's an assurance that money that we didn't spend, that's not encumbered, would by law be returned to City Council, but City Council would first entertain what we suggest it be used to do as it relates to the city schools, because sometimes we've used them for one-time salary bonuses, some technical purchases. Most of the time, it's capital improvements, but not always.
So what prevents us from, April, I should say, saying, we look like we have this much less due, buy some buses, less due?
Dr. Day's thought.
We can take.
We can do that now.
You have done that in the past, and I think the last time I brought a budget transfer, a big one to you, it kind of like, we were like, whoa, where's this come from? But when I first started, you would do probably two budget transfers per year where those are over a bigger line, not within the same function, where we would look at something that says, you know what, we anticipated the cost of this, because remember, we're building a budget now anticipating the cost of whatever. Let's just say it's fuel. We're anticipating the cost of fuel to be $400,000. Well, as we start to get in and we start projecting, fuel's only going to be $100,000. So there's $300,000 that is sitting there. Typically, because we've allocated it for fuel, we would leave it and just say, hey, we didn't need, we didn't need fuel, but at the end of the year, now we can get another capital improvement. Or you could say, and we have had to do some budget transfers where we may say, you know what, we know we're not going to use that. We could take half of that money to meet another need that we might have been able, like another one-time need, obviously, that we couldn't do, that we didn't think we could do, but look at us, fuel's not 400,000, it's only 100,000. We could do those transfers. But typically, if it's outside of a line category that's within my realm, it would come to the board for public discussion, and you all would vote on.
And I think, I thought we decided to try to do that more regularly, so that, okay.
So my suggestion at this point is that council may well vote on this on February the 14th. The day is the 7th, so we only have a week, if in fact they decide to dispatch of this matter by the 14th. If the recommendation, at least I'm hearing from two, maybe a third, is to allow the Finance Committee, whatever, have some kind of special meeting or somebody, take the piece, do the revision, and maybe we can talk it around over the next several days or so, and send something to council like we did, like they did to us in relationship to our thoughts about it. That's the only way I can think of that we can respond to it at this point. Anybody else have any suggestions? Dr.?
I think that's great. I'll make a comment and a couple of questions. One is that I think that City Council is expecting us to come to that meeting on February the 14th to be part of the discussion about this agreement. And I don't think they've formulated yet, based on the meeting that we had with them on Friday, what format that will be, but I think in some way, they want school board to be at that meeting to discuss this, so I think we should, we should do that.
Do you think they want us to make a presentation?
Vice Chair may well have a point here. At the very minimum, they want to have a written response. Oh, and.
We brought this up at the meeting on Friday with Mayor. They weren't sure how they would include it, but they would like to have people there to make it, the administration, school board chair, to be there to respond to this discussion. And they were trying to figure out whether that would be public comments or would be some other way.
But nothing's stopping us from, he's already drafted 60%, 70% of that letter. Send it out, we'll all show up, although we have a Finance and Facilities Committee meeting next Tuesday.
At what time?
At 3:30.
Is this the work session?
No.
No, no, I'm talking about is the council work session or the regular business?
The 7:30 meeting.
It'll be 7:30 meeting. Yeah.
So let's send the letter out, and we all show up in whatever format they have.
So is everybody okay with what Dr. Day read tonight? And there could be some possible tweaking based on interaction. We can kind of talk with each other. And then, wait a minute, the 14th is Valentine Day, isn't it?
Yes.
We're supposed to be with our Valentine, the 14th.
We're celebrating our football teams, remember?
Oh, that's going to be that night also. Okay. Well, Dr. Gupta, I think your suggestion is the best we have. We'll have dispatch of that. Hope they have this on the beginning of part of the agenda, because I got the Valentine. Otherwise, I will have to go stay at somebody's house. But anyway, is that okay, everybody? I think that that's the best I can think of at this late hour.
I think Dr. just said that one.
So as I understand it, what's being asked of me, which I'm willing to do, is to take what I read to you, turn it into a letter from us to City Council, and, but actually make my fourth point about one alternative being reformulation, make that a recommendation rather than an observation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody get good with that?
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll circulate it through the appropriate way so that further thoughts can be by Tuesday. Okay.
And also, I, I believe we concluded that that letter should be signed by our chair as you speak for the board, but I'm happy to go there and read it into the record, if that's what they want, or?
I think it's the board chair.
Okay.
I'll do that, but we'll be prepared to have our subject matter experts that go deeper if necessary, and that'll require some things on that.
Listen, I got one more question about the, we talked about that it might be beneficial to have some visits of the, offer the City Council to visit RS Payne, since that's the main thing we're talking about. Has that, has that been initiated or is that being?
That's going out, yeah.
It has. What dates are those? Can the board find out what dates those are, so in case board members want to be there too?
Two, one, maybe two people that have signed up.
Okay.
That's on the afternoon. I'll send you the time. It's 1:00.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all. I hope we've captured that. I know we have, best we can. Last item on the new business, K four. Obviously, you know that our deputy clerk, Barbara, is no longer with us, and through the proper vetting process and all of those details, the chair would be willing tonight in harmony with all of our proper code, section 22.1 dash 7 to 6 of the Code of Virginia, would there be a motion for us to approve the?
Yep, there is.
It's 9:35. I make it.
Dr. Gupta, thank you for having me back, because I was getting ready to, my hair was getting ready to fall. All right. Well, make sure now we're talking about Kerry Cole. All right. We moved and seconded. Dr. Gupta made the motion, Dr. Brennan made the second, that we would approve this. Madam Clerk, please call the roll for the said person.
School Board Member Ms. Preston.
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Senha.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Day. School Board Member Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let's give her a hand and. All right, Tina, you got some good help there. All right. All right, superintendent's comments section.
Yeah, given the hour, I'm just going to wish everybody a happy Black History Month, and just encourage us to, whatever we do as we approach the work that we do with children and staff, that we don't just rely on the history that was taught, but we be purposeful about making history now and improving the lives of our children, specifically our brown and black children and our families, as we do the work and have our own historical moment on making a difference in somebody's life.
Excellent, Dr. Edwards. We'll now move into our board comments. We'll start, Mr. Andrews.
I love you. Good night.
Dr. Day. Dr. Gupta.
I just wanted to say something as a father. You know, I have not received diploma for my daughter yet, and people tell me you are a school board member and your disabled daughter doesn't have her graduation diploma in January. I said, I've told the school board chair, I've told the superintendent, I've told the principal, and still I don't have it. The board membership ties me up, otherwise I'll be sitting on a hunger strike outside to get that diploma.
Be serious about this. I understand. I thought we were going to. We'll, we'll.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you, sir.
This is not a school board comment. This is as a father comment.
Again, just want to like, just want to thank the West Lynchburg Baptist Church for hosting TC Miller. It was always good to drive through there and see the sign, like, so that's just wonderful for that. At the Capitol Conference, I'm just so appreciative of the Byron, Delegate Byron and Walker, and also Senator Newman and Senator Peak for allowing us to come and meet with them and to talk with them regarding the deficit, or not the deficit, but the addition error, and also just to talk about some of the other bills that are in play. And at the time of the E.C. Glass incident, Delegate Walker was on the floor presenting the bill to make any type of calling or threatening that happens a felony. So, and also, we heard from Senator Newman and that the CARES money, they're looking at that, and when it gets close to the due date, if those funds are not used, then they're going to be taken and put into a pot there just in case, because we want to keep that funds instead of them being, going back. So we need to, I know we will look at those and how we are going to use those going forward, and they may start looking at it if they're due in September, maybe as early as July, August.
Thank you, Dr. Carter, Dr. Brennan.
I just want to say I'm looking forward to spending Valentine's Day at City Council, particularly celebrating the football team for E.C. Glass and Harridge High School who have set records. And the highlight of my week so far besides this board meeting was reading to the pre-K students at Paul Monroe on Monday, which was just wonderful. It's nothing like being hugged by a couple of four-year-old children to make your day, so that was a real treat. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Thank you. Very good. Dr. Senha.
I just want to echo what everybody else said and add, I really appreciate the passions of our public and their concerns for the welfare of their children. We really do encourage parental involvement, so it's good to see that on display here in public comments. Appreciate the student presentations we had. I'm really grateful that we do middle and elementary schools. It's really special. We need a little stool for them, of course, so we can see them better, but it's remarkable what's happening in our schools, and I think it's, it's a great showpiece that there's more to our schools than some would imply. And I'm just grateful to the teachers for the hard work they do. We notice you, we appreciate you, and we're trying to do our best for you.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. Mr. Tros.
I want to say thank you for the school board appreciation gifts, the students that put these wonderful things together today. Thank you for that lovely, adding to my waistline. Thank you, I love it. So everybody have a wonderful weekend and wonderful week. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Tros. Ms. Preston.
Thank you for all that you do. It's just really encouraging to listen to our different points of view. We don't always agree, but we're very seldom disagreeable, and, and so it's good to listen to those different perspectives because, because all of us together can come up with some great ideas and great solutions to some of our challenges, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Preston. I think Dr. Carter had one additional item.
This is what we do when we extend. This is what we do when we extend public comment, let's remember. The gifts, I just wanted to say thank you for all the gifts, and also congratulations to Mr. Reed for the award he won. I didn't catch all of it, but congratulations to him for that.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. And tonight's meeting, I think, was very good. And we received a lot of emails from a lot of parents around that issue, and I think that we made a bold step of saying we, we wanna listen. I also want to acknowledge that all of our commitment is so evident in what we've got in front of us. And, Dr. Waterco, I was up this morning at 6 o'clock in meetings, and left Washington at around something to 1:00, and got here at 4:00 something. And I have been in this meeting, and we have had a good time. And some boards stay in their meetings until 2:00 in the morning. We've never done that. But thank you all for, for, thank you for the commitment. It's a lot that we do.
I propose that, if it's Dr. Waterco, it's gonna be his personal pilot?
Fly you to your engagement.
Oh, I don't know. All right, so February 8th, got that legislative finance and facilities, we've got that, and we're gonna do that. All the rest of this stuff, you know what we got, and meeting adjourned.